Okay, it's 9:34 and I'm going to call this meeting the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and ask our clerk to please call the roll to establish a quorum and read the statement and meeting procedures.
Okay, good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 12th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Clerk, the clerk staff will transfer each caller into the meeting and you may be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you Flo. I would ask our deputy county exec Siobhan Cattori to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you and thank you to everybody here in chambers. We're going to start with our off-agenda public comments and I just, I thank you, I appreciate your assistance as we try to work through having an agenda that starts with some off-agenda public comment in the morning. Hopefully, we can get through that within 30 minutes, but if we can't and there are still folks in chambers that would like to make public comment, just keep in mind, we will do the remainder of the in-person public comment as well as phone public comment at the end. So, I appreciate you working with me and working with us as we try to work through this. I think it's important to be able to do some off-agenda comment in the beginning and hopefully we can get through it all, but certainly don't want to deprive anybody of a chance to address the Board on an off-agenda public comment item. So, with that, I will turn to our clerk and we will start with the off-agenda for 30 minutes.
Sorry, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty. Ms. Woolley?
Good morning Supervisors, I'm Debbie and I'm here to talk to you about a press release that went out on May the 1st. The Sacramento Taxpayers Association would like to have more of a advocacy relationship with you and be a liaison with the Board, so we wanted to let you know what we're up to. On April 13th, the Sacramento Tax Association claims and refuted the bogus claims of the League of California Cities. There is a agenda, there's on the, there are millions of people who have signed up for the TPA, which is going to be on the ballot and the League of California Cities is saying that it's bogus and that it's not good. So, the SAC Tax would like to say that according, the Californians are overtaxed. This is a referendum for us to not have so many taxes. We would like to say that the League of California Cities is not giving good information in their press release and we would like to say no. So, I'm a little nervous this morning. Can I put this out? I've got 43 seconds left.
Yes.
Sorry. Citizens' rights have been eroded by recent activist courts which have tried to weaken Prop 13 protections and in several instances, developers have taken advantage of the Upland Court decision loophole to use taxpayer dollars for their own self-interest. The TPA is a qualified initiative for the November 24th ballot and over 1 million citizen signatures have been signed calling for it to be adopted to protect Prop 13 and override local attempts to raise taxes and fees.
Ms. Woolley, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
And Debbie, make sure you send copies of that to the Board members of the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next Sharon.
Good morning everyone, thank you very much for your time. My name is Sharon Duchessee. I'm part of SAU 2015. I'm privileged to be part of the Executive Board. I'm also privileged to be part of the Bargaining Board. First, I wanted to say Happy Mental Health Awareness Month. This is very close to us because we do deal with individuals with mental health issues, so this is an important month for us as caregivers. We're currently in bargaining, as you guys are aware, and we want to focus on a better wage right now. We've given you all our proposals, so we now want to focus on better wages. To give you a little bit of information, the county pays 16 cents per hour. The federal and state pay 84 cents per hour, so the majority of the funding for this program comes from the state and the federal level. Our money stays locally and we use our money locally by paying bills, by paying rent, and by paying sales tax. So, your 16 cents investment, you're getting back immediately as an investment in us. So, we are asking for a better wage so we can invest more into Sacramento County. And our money stays locally, so I want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. We're unable to, many of us are unable to go on vacations. I don't know about anybody else. I don't have any offshore tax shelters that I can go into, so I want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. Our money stays locally, we want to support Sacramento County, and we're asking you to support us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Cuevas.
Muy buenos dias y gracias por su tiempo.
Hi, I'm going to be translating for Sarah Cuevas. She's going to read her speech in Spanish and I'll translate in English. So, she said, hi, thank you for having me here. Good morning.
Hola, mi nombre es Sarah Cuevas y he sido cuidadora por diez años y actualmente estoy cuidando a una persona diagnosticado con esquizofrenia, trastornos mentales y bipolar, también está adicto a drogas.
So, she's been a, can you hear me? All right. Yeah, so she has been a care provider, Sarah Cuevas here has been a care provider for about 10 years now and she is taking care of a client who has bipolar, who has been diagnosed with bipolar disorder and is also addicted to drugs. Thank you.
Hago este trabajo porque he llegado a amar a las personas que cuido y debido a su adicción a las drogas y enfermedades mentales, su familia, su familia se ha olvidado un poco de él.
Oh, déjame, I'll translate. So, she does this work because she loves the people that she cares for and she also understands that because he's a drug addict, a lot of his family has actually left him behind, so she's here to take care of him.
La familia no está tanto en comunicación con él, solamente que él los busque y sin mí pienso que él dice que sin mí él no sería nadie y estaría por las calles.
Yeah, so the only way that he gets in touch with his family is if he reaches out, but she actually believes if she wasn't here, you know, he'd be homeless on the streets.
Como cuidadora no hago lo suficiente para cuidar tal vez ni de mí misma puesto que solo me pagan cuatro horas como trabajadora de salud y ni siquiera tengo yo un seguro médico. Me han diagnosticado, en el pasado tuve cáncer y me han diagnosticado hace seis meses un tumor en mi cabeza y pues no tengo lo suficiente, no gano lo suficiente para atenderme. Esto tiene que cambiar, necesitamos ser tratados con dignidad y respeto.
Oh, déjame, I'll translate. So, she herself, she's a caregiver, a health care worker, and she has no health care. So, she is mentioning how she has had cancer in the past and she was actually just recently diagnosed with cancer again, tumor in her head. So, she's a caregiver without any health care. And she is saying how it is now time that we're treated with dignity and respect.
Y es hora pues de que nos tomaran más conciencia de que ganáramos por lo menos 20 dólares la hora.
And she also asks if you can consider, you know, all those facts and, you know, it's now time for 20 for caregivers. Thank you.
Muchísimas gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joy Acoro.
We now have Brooke.
Hello, good morning, I'm Brooke. I'm a little nervous, I don't have anything super prepared, but I want to say I'm here in solidarity of the care workers who deserve at the bare minimum a living wage and I'm also here in solidarity of my friend Liz, who's going to speak after me, but she's one of the many people that I've met over the last few weeks who've been affected by the county sweeps and they're really brutal. I've seen people get ticketed over and over again and moved over and over again and have everything destroyed over and over again. I've seen Rangers, county Rangers smash people's, like disabled people's faces into the ground and arrest them. I think these people really need help and not to be further kicked around. It like, it's an endless cycle and I know you probably recognize me, I've been here over the past few weeks, so I should be less nervous, but I, it's, yeah, I don't know. I'm kind of saying the same thing over and over again. The violence is really endless. I also work on a crisis line for my sister's house and I take so many calls that are really urgent situations of women experiencing violence that is indescribable and they need shelter immediately and there's no, like, no thing that I can offer them in that moment and it's really heartbreaking and I, I need to, it just, it's really painful to keep picking up the pieces of the harms that, that y'all are doing by not acting, by not doing your job of helping people, so please help people.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Liz. I don't know if you guys remember me from last year, I was here with Gunner and I was, you guys were talking about how, I don't know, like Brooke just said, sweeps and stuff like that. I've been part of a large sweep, like you guys, actually, I think it was you, Desmond, Rich Desmond, you actually promised me and Gunner's whole team housing and it's been a year and I'm still homeless and now I'm being swept and I'm being harassed by Rangers, like constantly, like I have like six tickets for a living and nothing's being done. Like you guys are going around Martin versus Boise, you guys are going around the whole side, like, I'm just, it's, I'm baffled, like this is, this is ridiculous, like something needs to be done, like soon, like I'm still homeless, so I don't know. Can we figure out something out? Can we do something better for like everybody? Instead of just sweeping people and taking people's things and making people go to jail for being homeless? Like, I mean, some people do want to be homeless, some people don't. I personally don't want to be homeless. I have, I've been homeless for 10 years. I'm tired of it. Like, I don't know, just I wish there was a change somewhere, so here I am trying to make a change. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you Liz, and I would just say this is off-agenda, so we can't get into a conversation about this, but please reach out to any of our offices to have a further discussion about this and your concerns and your needs.
Mr. Chair, we have one caller. Okay, James, if you could transfer the caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lee Miller, Coordinator for Residents Against Illegal Fireworks in Sacramento. I would like to express our gratitude to Eric Jones for his invaluable assistance in advancing the Illegal Fireworks Enforcement Plan. His support has been crucial this year for its progress. About this time last year, our organization, the County Executive Staff, TNT, and nonprofits selling state-approved fireworks worked together to develop and adopt an Illegal Fireworks Social Host Ordinance. Our hopes are high for success and impact on the illegal fireworks in our, in the unincorporated county. With the late passage of the ordinance, SSO and Metro Fire could not implement a plan last year. I am concerned that we have not received satisfactory answers to questions about this year's enforcement plan and fear it will once again fail and meet expectations. Our short list, this year Sheriff's Department will cover the unincorporated areas, but only one patrol car will be in the South Sacramento County. It's unclear whether these patrols will be regular or dedicated. In the past, the sheriffs have used marked cars contrary to common sense and alert violators to their presence. Unfortunately, there has been no clarity on the using of marked or unmarked vehicles. Metro Fire and Sheriff's Department agree to report violations of the Social Host Ordinance to the county, to county code enforcement. Despite that, there doesn't seem to be a protocol or an MOU documenting the violations. I respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors ask the sheriff and Metro Fire to present their enforcement plan as soon as possible to determine whether it meets expectations. Also, I request that the two agencies report back to the Board in late August or early September with the outcomes and challenges of their plan. Thank you for your attention and cooperation and I'll see you on the 23rd.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Okay, that concludes your public comments for off-agenda.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our consent calendar.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 2 through 56, I do have a couple of notes for you. For item 12, you're introducing an ordinance to change the definition of a quorum for the Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee by amending Chapter 2.27.070 of the Sacramento County Code. You'll waive full reading and continue to June 13th for adoption. Item 29, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 6.20 of the Sacramento County Code relating to solid waste management. You're waiving full reading and continuing to May 23rd, 2023 for adoption. And then for item 40, you're introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 6.99.445 of the Sacramento County Code to update the collection of Environmental Management Department regulatory fees, waiving full reading and continuing to May 23rd for adoption. And that concludes my notes, the clerk's notes.
Okay, thank you. And so, should we first take a motion on continuing these three items then?
No, we can do that when you take the whole balance.
Okay, great. Okay, then I will, next I will turn to my colleagues to see if there are any questions or comments about any of the consent items. Okay, I've seen no, oh, sorry Supervisor Hume.
I apologize, I do have a question on item 38, just more of a comment really.
On item 38, okay, let me get to that one really quick. Item 38 is the authorization to execute a revenue agreement with the City of Ileton for the provision of law enforcement services for the period of July 1 through June 30th of 2024.
Yeah, so I, having spoken with folks down in Ileton and in Ileton and the Delta generally, you know, there's just a dearth of law enforcement down there and my predecessor would say somewhat tongue-in-cheek that we ought to contract with ourselves because he saw how the sheriffs would staff up the contracted cities relative to our coverage in the unincorporated area. And so, I would just like to ask, you know, if we can reach out to either the sheriff or the under sheriff and explore some possibilities of how we can take this money that is being put on the table by the City of Ileton to increase some level of visibility down in the Delta, even if it's not sworn officers, something that puts some people down there to be able to take reports or to perform tasks that aren't necessarily a threat to life or public safety. But I just see that if we have revenue coming in, that we ought to be doing something and I know that Ileton would be willing to, you know, parlay what they're putting into the kitty for the benefit of the Delta as a whole. So, whatever we can do, I just appreciate something. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Hume. And I don't see any other supervisors in the queue or were they keyed up here? So, any public comment on consent items?
So, we do not have anyone in the queue, but we do have several in-person. So, Ms. Woolley has signed up for several items. She did indicate that she's not going to speak on all of them, so I'll go ahead and call out those items. Item 5, 7, 12, 13, 17, and 29 are the items. So, Ms. Woolley, if you could come down to the public counter here and, or to the podium. Mr. Chair, how would you like to proceed because there's multiple items here?
Well, I'm not going to give two minutes per each item that you call out. Okay, so I'll give you two minutes. Okay, great.
Hey Rich, thank you again. So, I have two concerns that I wanted to address in two minutes. One is that I've, in becoming an advocate with the Board and becoming a liaison, I want to see the agenda as soon as possible, so I've put a reminder on my telephone Thursday to start looking for it. I didn't see it Thursday, Thursday night, Friday, Friday morning, Friday noon, and by Friday afternoon, I was fully engaged in life and date night and I did not get a chance to see the agenda items. I pulled a text off Saturday night, I didn't have time to review it on Sunday, so my first request is, there's 2,000 pages to read, there's no way that I can be on the same page with you if I don't get a copy of the agenda item to send out to my team until Friday afternoon. So, that's my first thing. The second thing is, this morning I did go through the text that I had pulled and I searched for the word waived because what was concerning me is two things. It's a heck of a lot of items and I respect the fact that we're saving time, but there's a heck of a lot of items on the consent calendar. We don't even talk about them, there's, there's really not a lot of air given to these and there's a lot of good ones there, there's a lot of money, but I did a search this morning for the word wave and I came up with 5, 7, 13, 17, 12, 29, and 40, wrote them down and came here. My, really my point is, is it good governance to keep waiving? Now, you know what, I clerically made errors, there, I came down and saw the real agenda today and there's only three that they're being waived and one of them is 40, which you've already heard. But my point is, I want to be organized, I want to know what you're talking about, I know, I want to know what's going on in the county. I want to be able to talk about that intelligently and with you. And it's a concern to me that we're waiving these on the first reading. Yes, we have been truncating the time for public comment, we've been truncating the time from, you know, forever in the morning to only 30 minutes and now we can do it. I see that you need to be efficient and effective, but in order for me to be efficient and effective, I would like your cooperation with those requests.
More time.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Debbie and let me, you know, and thank you, I know your comments are really related to several items because of kind of how they appear on the agenda. So, a question I had, this has come up a lot in the past in terms of the agenda, getting the agenda out earlier, so the public does have a more of a meaningful like opportunity to review it and make contact with us, certainly with respect to consent items, so we can maybe raise some of these concerns during our briefing. So, I was told we used to be able to get that agenda out Thursday mornings, which would be a little more time.
Thursday afternoon.
Okay, okay, but that is always a concern, I mean, that certainly does affect the public's ability to really review, evaluate the agenda and make contact with their, you know, representatives prior to the, to the meeting. So, that is, that is our aspiration to get it done Thursday afternoon and so you have that material available to you. But thank you Debbie, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
You're in charge, you're in charge Flo.
I'm so in tuned. For item 23, we have, Ms. Brooke has several items as well, so it looks like we're doing two minutes for the consent calendar, so that, she's on 23, 36, 37, and 39. Ms. Brooke, okay, so she has left, we'll just make sure that it gets noted in the, in the record.
Okay.
And she, on the record, she's neutral for all items, okay?
Okay.
And that's it, so we'll go ahead and close the public comments and I'm going to double check the phone queue. Yeah, we'll go ahead and close all the public comments.
Okay. So, I don't, I'll bring it back to the Board, any other comments or questions from my colleagues here? Seeing none, undertake a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll move consent.
Second.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
For item 57, this is a presentation of resolution honoring Improve Your Tomorrow's commitment to community and the success of young men of color.
Okay, I'll ask Michael Lynch, I believe, Michael Casper also up there and everybody from your team, Michael, please, please have them come down. So, let me, let me preface this with, I'm very upset that my intern Emmanuel is not here with you, so, who interned in my office. I'm just really thrilled to be able to give you this presentation, you know, I got to know Michael Lynch over the past couple of years and got to, I got a little more familiar with what you're doing with Improve Your Tomorrow and was just really blown away at the benefits that you bring to young men of color in our, in our region and throughout the state. So, let me read a few prepared comments and then I will turn it over to you, Michael, to say a few words and then, and then ask my colleagues if they have anything to say. So, Improve Your Tomorrow was founded in 2013 by Michael Lynch and Michael Casper to serve the increasing number of young men of color, or to help increasing number of young men of color attend and graduate from colleges and universities. I had the pleasure, I just alluded to this, of having an intern in my office last year, Emmanuel, and he was just terrific and I hope we get another intern. As a matter of fact, I hope, you know, my colleagues all will, will take advantage of an opportunity possibly to get an intern in their office. Your program has expanded to not only serve Sacramento County but also serve young men all across Northern California. Improve Your Tomorrow launched a 13 Improve Your Tomorrow launched a 1,300 campaign targeting Sacramento County communities impacted by race-based disparities in education, health, economic conditions, and violence, with the goal of dramatically increasing college enrollment for young men of color through systemic policy change. IYT has 3,700 members and 63 sites across seven counties, with more than 500 men sent to college since 2015. I honor IYT for its commitment to the community and the success of young men of color. I express my gratitude to the founders, Michael and Michael, for their vision, motivation, and for being a source of inspiration and transformation for so many lives throughout Sacramento County and, and California. So thank you, and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, honoring you today for the work of Improve Your Tomorrow and to show our support for your efforts. So, Michael, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Appreciate, well, look, there's, there's two Michaels as the co-founders. I'm definitely the better-looking Michael, so I'm glad he's not here to confirm. But first, I want to thank Supervisor Desmond, I mean, for his leadership, for his grace, for, for his empathy, for, just for his heart. I got to know him the past couple of years, and Sacramento County is truly a blessing to be able to have you in service. You know, you all have a tremendous impact. I want to thank you all. I mean, we're, this year we celebrate our 10th year. So we have served thousands of young men of color over the course of 10 years, and each one of you over the course of 10 years have supported IYT through an event sponsorship, through hosting an intern, right, through ARPA funding. The work that we do is really based in community, and I'm a product of that community. I went to Valley High School in South Sac, you know, not always a, the, the neighborhoods which I grew up in were tremendously challenging. There were tremendously cha, fantastic people, but not always opportunities for us to be able to thrive. And I was fortunate, because, you know, not only did I have a phenomenal dad, I had some teachers and counselors and folks really invested in me, and the, the premise of Improving Tomorrow was exactly that. We know that our young men, although they're the lowest-performing students in almost all of our schools in Sacramento County, have a tremendous ability to be exceptional. We have seen that over the course of 10 years, where 99% of our young men graduate high school a long time, close to 80% attend college, and now we have folks who are, who are really leaders within this community. And this, all of this is steeped within communities. So we appreciate you all and your leadership, and we know that you all have a hard job, and for us, you know, it's trying to make sure we can go alongside to solve this. And I'll be remiss if I did not talk about our biggest project, like, to date. Currently, we're in the process of renovating a 15,000-square-foot building in North Sacramento in Supervisor Serna's district to create the first-ever college success center for young men of color in California, and I would argue the entire country. So we would appreciate your support as we seek to renovate and to move this project forward and have the county go alongside us to do this first-of-its-kind project to create transformative outcomes for young men of color within our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else have anything to say? I'm sure you're, I'll, I'll now ask my colleagues, any comments from?
I'll jump in. Not a lot more to add, other than, you know, Michael, I've watched your work over the years. You know, I think Don Natoli dragged me to my first IYT event, and I was blown away then and have been ever since. You know, I, as a former school board member, I've, I saw up close firsthand how there's so many people in our community, particular in our communities of color, where kids, and particularly young men, they're, they don't grow up, you know, like a lot of us did. With, with a lot of us, it wasn't, am I going to go to college? It's which college am I going to go to? But, you know, in certain communities, many communities in, you know, our county, people never hear that. They never, they're never told you're going to college. There's, they don't have that expectations. You build that expectations and you deliver. So thank you all for the work that you do. We appreciate it in South Sacramento especially.
And I'll just pile on by first proclaiming some bragging rights, as Michael alluded to, in terms of their ambitious capital campaign and intention to have that 15,000-square-foot building located in the first Supervisory District. But much more important than the facilities is the people involved with Improve Your Tomorrow. So I just want to express my gratitude for everything you do for the people that we have the good fortune of serving. I consider it a partnership, as we do with so many other great organizations that do good work, especially in the, the space of making sure that, regardless of where you start in life, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that's where you're going to finish life. And I think that's, in a nutshell, kind of what the mission of IYT is, is to make sure that you are influencing to the best of your abilities. The fact that every young man has a great potential, and it really, on occasion, just need, you know, needs nurturing by folks that can see that potential and make sure that they have what they need to succeed. And, and again, we can't do it all as a local government, and we lean hard, quite frankly, on great nonprofits like yours, and we wish you all the, the great success and keep up the great work.
And I'll just add that I had the pleasure of attending recognition breakfast earlier this year, and I just want to say that the caliber of people involved with your program, certainly from the founders and the staff, as well as the mentors that impart their wisdom and guidance, but particularly the young men that were represented, having participated, it really, I mean, I, I got, I hope you wake up grateful every day about the impact you're having on the, the world, and certainly on these individuals. And, and congratulations to you, and I'd love to be there for the ribbon-cutting when you, when you finish your renovations.
I just want to say, I think this is the kind of work that can change the world. So often, we focus on how we can fix what's broken, but what you're doing is, you're working from the inside out to change a culture or change a dynamic, a life. You're changing, you're doing something bigger that will spread and multiply with families and neighborhoods and communities, and I want to applaud you for your leadership and for all that you're doing, and tell you that I'm excited. And if you need internships, I hope you will reach out to my office if we can help. We're happy to, and want to support in any way we can. Thank you.
So I, I knew all of my colleagues would want to say something, because you have universal support from the Board of Supervisors for the work that you do, and, yeah, about that, that recognition breakfast. To me, it's just inspiring to see the role models, the supports, the inspiration from, from everybody there who are just embracing these young men, lifting them up and making sure they succeed. So thank you, and I'd ask everybody in the audience and my colleagues to please join me in a round of applause for. Then I ask for, maybe we do a photo in front of the dais?
Yep. Very nice. Okay. One, two, and three. Stand by, maybe one. Okay. One, two, and three. Okay. We'll be back to the supervisor. Okay. Okay. May is Bike Month 2023.
Okay, thank you. We have Cheryl.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Crozier, and I'm the Executive Director of both the Sacramento Transportation Management Association, as well as the 50 Corridor Transportation Management Association. These are two nonprofit organizations that are actually in the early stages of merging, and our mission is really to help people choose sustainable transportation. And we do that through work with employers throughout the region, including the county and all of your employees here in this building, as well as some of the other departments of the county. We also work in communities. So for example, in Supervisor Hume's district, we work with a community who pay fees every year to help mitigate their air quality impacts. And in all of our work, we're educating people about their transportation options and helping them explore their travel habits and trade more driving trips for sustainable trips by walking, biking, carpooling, and using transit. So one of the big events that we have every year is May is Bike Month, which is a huge institution around Sacramento, and we're really excited to be a partner in May's Bike Month this year. We've already got over 330 workplaces throughout the region registered for the challenge. This is a month-long challenge. Most people participate with their workplace, which means they log their rides throughout the month, and their workplace, their teammates, get points towards the competition. And individuals are also entered to win for prizes such as bike giveaways, e-bike giveaways, and things like that. So there are over 3,500 people in the region who are currently registered and participating. I think they've already logged over 7,000 bike rides. And a quick check, it looked like about 44% of those rides were for transportation purposes, which means replacing a driving trip with a bike trip, which is phenomenal for our air quality, our health, VMT reduction, and all of that good stuff. Before I turn it over to Deb Banks, who's the Director of SABA, which is
Crashing the party.
The, the organization leading this effort, I just wanted to encourage you all that, as of a few days ago, only 22 people that work in this building were registered for the Bike Month Challenge. So I would encourage you and your staff to go online to mayusbikemonth.com, register for the challenge, get out on your bike and log a ride, and I promise you that you and your staff will feel happier and healthier for having done it.
Yeah, right on. Thanks, Cheryl. My name is Deb.
Thanks for throwing down the gauntlet, Cheryl, yes.
Yeah, exactly. I'm going to raise that even a little bit more. My name is Deb Banks. I'm the Executive Director of SABA and the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates, and this is our second year in running May is Bike Month. It used to be in the hands of SECOG. They asked us if we would take it over, because we are a local advocacy organization and have partners and friends throughout the SECOG region. So we said yes. Here we are in year two, having a delightful time, encouraging everybody to trade their car keys for their handlebars, and even a short trip, it can be two blocks, it can be a mile, it can be 100 miles if you're a bike hiker or a long-distance cyclist. It doesn't matter. What we're trying to get people to do is to leave their cars at home and just try using a bicycle or walking, which is good for them, and of course, as Cheryl said, good for VMT reduction, good for our greenhouse gases, great for the environment, et cetera. So City of Sacramento has, you know, a number more than 22 on their team, so I'm just going to sweeten the pot a little bit and encourage you all to get it together and join this fun month. Supervisor Kennedy, I was with you last year when we were up on the levee with SECOG. It was cold, and you rode your bike there and back. So I encourage all of you guys to get on your bikes and bring a friend, bring your kids, and join May is Bike Month. We have activities going on all month long. We had a big kickoff in West Sacramento. We have got a big week going on for May is Bike Week, which is next week, and then we've got a man named Eric Sedano, who is known as the Bicycle Nomad, coming into town. This man's very amazing. He retraces history by bicycle. So he's, he retraces the history of the Underground Railroad. So he started riding his bicycle at, at the slave auction block in the plaza in New Orleans and rode his bicycle all the way to Ohio, staying in places that were known safe houses on the Underground Railroad. That's incredibly impressive. Not, not to just be done with that, he then is retracing the steps of the Buffalo Soldiers, rode his bike from Missoula, Montana, down to St. Louis, Missouri, bringing to life the history of the trek that these people have done. Pretty amazing. He's coming to Sacramento on the 19th, and that's great. And then at the very end of the month, we're closing down Del Paso Boulevard for an Open Streets Festival called Bikes on the Boulevard, which is what we have a nickname of Saclavia versus Siclavia, which is the Open Streets Festival that happens down in Bogota. So we encourage you guys to come on out, participate in all the great activities that we've got going on, and join us for May is Bike Month.
Thank you, Deb and Cheryl, for being here. And certainly, you know which buttons to press, because this body does not like to play second fiddle to the City of Sacramento
That's right.
In any way, shape, or form. So I appreciate that. And are, do you have any information you could send, you know, to our offices so we can push this out on our social media platforms and to our, our email list? Would be, would be really helpful. And I'll turn it over to my, my colleagues, see if any, are there any comments? I don't see any. Any public comment on this item?
We do not. Let me just double-check. We do not have any public comments.
Okay, and I'll just, you know, we don't have the, the resolution, a formal copy of it here to present, but just the resolution at the end of the, of the resolve, be it resolved at the end, is that the County of Sacramento, State of California, is hereby pleased to support this worthwhile endeavor to foster a healthier community through all the benefits of bicycling, and therefore joins with others throughout our state and nation by proclaiming May is Bike Month in the County of Sacramento. With that, thank you very much for being here today and your presentation, and for all of your advocacy.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay.
Our next item is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing May 2023 as Lyme Awareness Month.
And it's Melissa, Melissa? Okay, I'll join you at the podium.
This is a request to the Board to recognize Lyme disease awareness, which is something that is crucial and has a huge impact in our community. As many of you know, Lyme disease is a complex, multi-system illness caused by bacterial infection, transmitted by the vitamin-infected tick. It's often a misunderstood illness that can cause serious health problems if not caught early and properly treated. Sacramento County is pleased to join the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Controlled District in bringing attention to the risk of exposure as we approach the summer months and outdoor activities associated with the season. And we invite, Sacramento County invites people throughout our community to recognize the importance of Lyme disease and learn, learn more about how to avoid and protect themselves from it. And we appreciate those who serve to research, treat, and combat this and other diseases and carriers which transmit them. And so on behalf of the Board, we proclaim May 2023 as Lyme Disease Awareness Month in Sacramento County. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Melissa.
Thank you. I'm Melissa, oops, sorry. I'm Melissa Moya, and I am the Executive Director of Lyme Fight Foundation here in Sacramento. We are, our mission is to educate and bring awareness to Lyme disease. We are working on trying to get into the schools and the different parks and recreation areas to just bring awareness, let everybody know to be safe when they're out there enjoying our trails. I am a Lyme patient, and that's why I did start the foundation. There was not a lot of information that I could find, so we are working towards it and also being a, a place for patients to come, for help, and a resource. So thank you very much for supporting us again this year.
Thank you, Melissa. We're, we're happy to help recognize not only the, the importance of being aware of this, but also recognize the, the hard work of you and so many others in helping keep us safe. So thank you. I mean, I'll, I'll ask my colleagues, any comments? Colleagues?
Just welcome back and thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on this?
Any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Yeah. Flo, could you take a picture of us?
Oh, absolutely.
as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Morning, Dr. Quist.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair members. Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director. Every year, May, we get excited because it's another opportunity for us to talk about mental health and the important work we do, as well as the people that we serve. So we appreciate that the Board of Supervisors is supporting Mental Health Awareness Month through this resolution. In any given year, roughly 1 in 5 individuals will experience a diagnosable mental illness during their lifetime. But research shows that only 1/3 of those individuals will seek professional help, primarily due to the stigma and discrimination surrounding mental health. So, launched in 2012, Behavioral Health, MHSA, Mental Health Services Act-funded and community-supported multimedia project called Mental Illness: It's Not Always What You Think. Project aims to increase awareness about mental health and wellness, reduce stigma and discrimination associated with mental illness, and inspire hope and recovery. So in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month, the Mental Illness: It's Not Always What You Think project will have an art display at various locations around the county. And you can find out where those locations are, as well as learn more about the project at our website, which is wwwstopstigmasacramento.org. One of the other components of the project that we're really proud of is that we have what we refer to as the Stop Stigma Speakers Bureau. And these are individuals who will come and tell their story. So put a face to the work, as well as demonstrate their experience and success with recovery. So along those lines, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to one of our Speakers Bureau speakers. And so if I could invite Desiree Aragon on up, please. She's been with the Speakers Bureau since 2020, and she's here to share her personal story with you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Welcome, Desiree.
Thank you. So I'm terrified being here today. I've been with the Speakers Bureau since 2020, and we were virtual. This is actually my first in-person time sharing my mental health journey. So thank you for having me. Thank you, Sacramento County. Thank you, Supervisors. And thank you to the mental health, I'm sorry, Mental Illness: It's Not Always What You Think project for allowing the Stop Stigma Speakers Bureau to do this. If you've ever walked into a haunted house, you were probably expecting to be scared. Maybe you turned a corner and thought something might jump out at you or make a loud noise, and that perhaps excited you, made you giggle, or hide behind somebody. That experience of being in a haunted house is how I live my life every day. I live with something that's called generalized anxiety disorder, and I'm in a constant state of high alert. Being here today seems like a normal thing to do, to participate in county activities. For me, I have cried. I cried when we saw our caregivers speak openly about what it's like to serve the people that they care for. I cried when I saw the young men of color be able to form their not-for-profit and talk about the world that they're going to create by changing the communities that they have lived in and the people that they inspire. I cried because I know somebody who passed away from Lyme disease. This is what it's like to be highly sensitive and live with generalized anxiety disorder. How did I get here? I grew up in a home where it was generations of undiagnosed anxiety, so we didn't know we had it. My mom didn't know she had it. Her mother had it. Her mother's mother had it, but they never knew. When I was in my 20s, I had become a workaholic, and the only thing I did was work and party. And I felt like there must be more to life, and so I went to a psychiatrist, or a counselor better. And the counselor said, "Yeah, you have something called generalized anxiety disorder." I said, "What's that?" She says, "Well, basically, if you go left, what happens?" I said, "I feel like it's a wrong decision. And right? Wrong decision. And forward? Wrong decision." And in that time, I realized that it didn't matter what I was doing. I always felt like I was going to be bad or wrong. And I had this amazing skill for appearing like everything was okay. I don't know if you can see this right now, but most people would probably be shaking a little bit more than I am. I have this ability that the more scared I am, the more poised I appear. And unfortunately, that meant that people didn't know that I had this disorder. So thankfully, my psychiatrist or my therapist at the time helped me to see that I had the disorder, and I was able to get some coping mechanisms that allowed me to more center my life on the things that I thought I was supposed to do. Coping mechanisms were things like journaling, walking, biking, making sure that I was able to do a meditation, breathing exercises, quiet reflection. So I got what I thought was better. I actually thought I overcame the disorder. But what really happened is I didn't understand that the anxiety morphed itself into something that's called codependency. And I didn't understand that actually every decision I was making for my spouse and my children were based on everything that they needed. I also became an executive, and during that time, I was focusing on everything that my workforce needed. I was very good at my job, but I really sucked at taking care of myself. So eventually, that codependency morphed itself into something called major depressive disorder. My doctor suggested that I might have depressive disorder, and I denied it, stating that, no, no, it was just a difficult time. I went back to the doctor again for something else, and the doctor said, "Are you sure?" I said, "Oh, I'm sure. This is because of stigma. I did not understand what depression looked like. I did not think I qualified for depression. I didn't identify with depression because people don't talk about it openly." And so I denied it to my doctor because I didn't know what my doctor was seeing that made my doctor suspect depression. I denied it. I kept trying to go forward. My life fell apart. My marriage fell apart. My work that I loved, I loved my work, and I couldn't do it anymore. And I came to a place where I finally had to admit that I needed help. I was placed through Kaiser into an outpatient program. And the outpatient program led me to a psychiatrist who said, "Listen, you have a problem. You use a ton of 'I-think' statements. You don't need any more coping skills. What you need to understand is that your marriage and your childhood left you unable to express your own feelings. The state of anxiety, the way that I protected myself, was by becoming so poised, I lost the ability to show people that I had feelings underneath. Could I emote for you? Yes. When you were emoting, I could emote. I could not emote for me." So what I had to learn is I had to learn how to do that. Well, my doctor prescribed antidepressants. I had not wanted them. I had said, "I don't think I need those." And the reason is, is because stigma told me that what would happen with antidepressants is I would stop feeling. And because I loved my emotions with other people and considered them a superpower outwardly, I was scared that I wouldn't be able to feel anymore. I was wrong. I was given antidepressants, and what it taught me how to do was not only have the feelings that I have for others, but it taught me how to have feelings for myself. Today, I stand before you as somebody who actually has learned how to ask questions like, somebody asks me to do something like, "Will you present to Sacramento County's Board of Supervisors?" And I stop and I check in with myself, and I say, "Well, how does that feel? Is it something I can do? And maybe it's something I might want to do, but maybe today I can't do it." It just so happens, when this request came in, I was able to stand before you. I'm grateful that I can stand here and I can tell you that I still use my coping mechanisms, journaling, walking, breathing. I also have added these emotional techniques of being able to ask myself, "What am I feeling in this moment? What do I need? What decision will, what will this decision do in the long term for me?" And now, where in the past, the generalized anxiety disorder diagnosis that I got when I was in my 20s represented the deepest part of myself where I felt shame, today, I love that part of me. That part of me that cried all through this morning's presentations is the part of me that I say is getting my attention to show me what matters, to show me that I have real feelings, and that I can give attention to things that are important to me. For the first time in my life, I'm not hiding any parts of me, was happening inside of my mind, is now something I willingly share with the outside world. It means I have to be vulnerable and imperfect and sometimes broken, and I think that that's what makes me whole and real and amazing. And I thank God for the Stop Stigma Mental Illness: It's Not What You Think project because what I learned is my thinking was the problem. And now I have the safe space to feel and to share with you what I feel, thanks to being a part of the Stop Stigma Speakers Bureau. Thank you so much for supporting mental health and supporting all of us on the journey of stopping stigma and communicating that mental illness is not always what we think.
Thank you, Desiree. That was inspiring, and thank you for your courage being here today.
And yeah, and thank you for being so willing to share your vulnerability and your success at being able to do what you do. We would like to ask you, for the purposes of our campaign, if we could do some photos?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let us do that, Ms. Ross, please, because if that falls on someone, it will hurt you.
I'm better at this than walking, I guess.
Can I just grab a couple of pictures with my phone so I can do them for their social media?
Good.
Stay with me first, and then you'll do the big guys.
Okay, we did the photo first, but now I'll turn it over to my colleagues, see if there are any comments about this item. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I just want to thank Desiree for not just the courage that it took to stand up there, but for the vulnerability and recognizing that this was okay for you this morning. And I hope that through your words, you are empowering others to get in touch with themselves. And, you know, you touched on something that is, I think, critical not only to this campaign, but just in general relative to our mental health, and that's the admission that it's okay to not be okay. And to face that. And the other thing that you touched on, that having studied a little bit of mindfulness, is how powerful our thoughts are and what they do to us. And if we don't check in with them, and if we aren't aware of them, our brain will control us rather than the other way around. And so I wish you joy and good fortune on your journey, and I know that it will be a journey every day. And thank you so much for sharing your story with us.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. And I'll just, you know, say a few words. I certainly echo what Supervisor Hume said, and, you know, this campaign is so important, the awareness this month is so important. You know, I've heard from so many people who I've learned from over the past few years of being in office here, you know, we have always made this distinction between physical health and mental health. There shouldn't be that distinction. It's health. It's just good health. And whether it's a mental health issue or physically, they should be treated the same. We should not stigmatize, we should not make any judgments about people, whatever their health issue is. We should just find a way to help get people get healthy. I just participated with Supervisor Kennedy in the NAMI Walk event over the weekend. And as you know, a huge focus of that event is to de-stigmatize mental health and to come together as a community and be more aware of the resources that are out there, the supports that are out there. I, like so many people, have dealt with mental health issues and certainly more profound issues with members of my family. But this is an issue that impacts everybody in one way or another. So thank you for everything you do. Thank you to our county staff, our Behavioral Health Director. Appreciate you so much and your efforts, Ryan, and your efforts, you know, educating me about things we're doing in Sacramento County and what the need is. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Just real briefly, I don't have much to add to your eloquent words, other than I do want to say, for those that are listening and those that are in chambers today, I want to thank our staff for the participation in the NAMI Walk. You know, Supervisor Desmond and I challenged each other, and we committed district resources. But what really blew me away was our staff and how everybody stepped up. And for those that participated in the walk and some that couldn't but still sent in check, we raised over $3,000 just from the Board of Supervisors and executive staff and the clerk of the board staff. And, you know, we barely tried, and that's phenomenal. So to our staff, I want to say thank you. It's an important commitment that we continue to make, not just from a budgetary standpoint, but from a personal standpoint. And y'all stepped up in a big way. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Do we have any public comment?
We do, we didn't. Let's double-check. We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item 61.
Yes. Item 61 is the Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board Policy Brief: Mental Health Resource Accessibility and Sustainability.
Welcome.
Good morning. Before we get started, I just want to let, this is the, okay, perfect. Good morning, honorable supervisors, and thank you so much for your presence today as we explain our recommendations, especially during Mental Awareness Month.
And could you, real quick, maybe do an introduction? Are you Savannah?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We're going to do introductions briefly. So these are the table of contents. This is what we're going to be going over today, and we shall start with our introductions.
So good morning. I'm Jordan Kotapu. I'm a vice chair of the Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, echoing the values of my community. Taking my lived experience of chronic homelessness, mental health battles, and state-sanctioned interpersonal violence into stride, it's with great intention that I've set out to cultivate community and belonging for youth. An advocate for African youth in Folsom-Cordova Unified and After-School Program, staff member with a focus on building and maintaining healthy relationships, restorative justice practices, and centering student voice.
Good morning. My name is Savannah Carmeau, and I am the board chair of the Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. Reaching out to impact youth both physically and mentally has always been a great passion of mine, and I did it through my organization before joining this board. And I've had so many different opportunities on this board to improve myself and to advance my knowledge about mental awareness while effectively encouraging my generation to live that healthier lifestyle. Most of my life, I've been brought up in a low-income neighborhood that hasn't had the best mental health support that the government could provide, and mental health isn't really taken seriously in those spaces that youth need. So hopefully, this policy brief can bring us in that direction and refocus the attention on communities that don't have access to the plentiful resources that Sacramento has to offer but isn't really accessible for them.
Hi there. My name is Natanya Karat. I'm a secretary and District 4 representative on this board. And a little bit about why I'm here today is because mental and behavioral health has always been a passion of mine. I've personally had my own shared experiences with it, but what makes me so excited about this field of public health is how we can look at it from a different societal to historical standpoint. And I'm also a pretty big fan of public speaking. I'm really thankful to have gotten the opportunity to collaborate with UN-level organizations such as Girl Up and the Learning Planet Community, and I'm just very excited to have this opportunity to advocate at a local policy level.
Hi, my name is Hi, my name is Rhonda Johann. I'm a freshly joined Associate Board Member. Since I recently joined, I do not have that much experience, but I have strong passions in mental health, and roots in there, too.
All right, so we're going to move towards telling you a little bit about our current and previous board members. So, starting off with District 1, we have previous board member Mark Borges. He's a Cal Poly graduate with a Bachelor's in Science in Environmental Management and Protection. Mark Borges remains actively engaged in Sacramento County. After aging out of the Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Mark was appointed to the Public Health Advisory Board. Next up, we have previous member Trezel White. He's a graduate from Mental Health Court. Trezel White prides himself on leading by example. After experiencing stigma for mental illness, Trezel joined the Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board with the intent of making the change to our community, and creating safe spaces for those with mental illness. Now, Trezel is an active member of former President Obama's mentoring program, My Brothers' Keeper. And lastly, our previous member for District 1 is Karen Carr. She is a first-generation daughter of a low-income Puja B Sikhs. Karen is never shy about speaking up against injustices. Her lived experience with low-income social service programs ignited her passion to advocate for change in systems. She completed her master's degree in London at St. Mary's University, and now works at Weave.
Going on to District 2, we have current member Jalen Wright. He's a senior at Sacramento Charter High School. Jalen strives to become part of our mental health workforce, and Jalen joined this board as a beginning of his journey of making a positive impact on people's mental health. We also have previous member Marisha Posh. Marisha Posh is a native youth ambassador and an active member of Law Academy. Marisha Posh is inspired by her grandfather, who immigrated to the U.S. from Mexico at 21-years-old. Marissa joined the board with hopes to make a difference in this community, and to be a voice to those that do not have the courage to speak out. Going on to District 3, we have Audrey Nunez. Audrey is a paraprofessional, recently accepted into the teaching program at UC Davis, and Audrey works with the Sacramento Youth Center, where she successfully facilitates empowerment groups for young FEMA-identifying people.
All right, so I'd like to introduce my co-member, Aria Sravastava, who's a really amazing community activist, and she's also a current student board member of the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District, and a senior at Viso del Oca High School.
And lastly, alongside myself in District 5, we have previous member Madison Nguyen. She is a developer of school campus wellness centers. Maddie Nguyen dedicated her high school years to mental health advocacy and awareness. Her support to fellow peers was imperative during COVID. Maddie resigned from the Behavioral Health Advisory Board when she left for undergrad at UC Irvine.
Now, we'll get into more of our timeline highlights. Our board officially began convening in October 2021, and since then, we have focused our efforts on learning from the community, as well as the varying sectors that support youth. We have also participated in many collaborative efforts advancing youth. Following an extensive debriefing on the Behavioral Health Department and their service continuum, Superintendent Dave Gordon informed us of the current initiatives and goals SCOWI intended on implementing. We attended many children's system of care committees, which developed the school-based mental health report, and enlightened us on the CityRise survey content, which we were able to refer back to when researching for our own recommendations. Our board also then wrote a letter of support, standing in unison for the belief that mental health must be prioritized in the school system. Conversations with the county peer advocates provided context to youth lifestyles many board members do not encounter or have lived experience with. This was an indicator that even with the vast diversity of the lived experience that you just heard from our board, it was imperative that we conduct extensive research before developing these policy recommendations. The multi-yeard student mental health and wellness program is such a beautiful symbolism of breaking barriers between sectors that serve youth. However, as we followed the development and listening sessions of this plan, we recognized that our board was often the only youth voice at the table. This plan is very admirable, which is why we advocated for the Glenn Prize Group facilitators to host a youth-only listening session. Another collaborative effort that we engaged in was the development and the outreach of a mental health survey for youth. East Bay Asian Youth Center, EBC, and our board gathered well over 1,200 different surveys, allowing for statistical significance. The results of the survey were debriefed during a conference hosted at Sacramento State. This survey reached youth communities we did not feel our lived experience aligned with, allowing us to gain even more insight to other youth. In order to have a very comprehensive understanding of varying youth communities, the last group we interacted with was the Refugee Youth at the International Rescue Committee survey, to further gain even more insight, to ultimately add to our policy.
So, moving into a little bit about our recommendation stages, our timeline of events has allowed us to feel confident in our ability to present our recommendations to you here today. Before we dive straight into our policy development, though, we went through a thoughtful process. The culmination of data allowed us to easily navigate through conversations with other youth for listening sessions and one-on-one conversations, bringing us to developing goals for the board that encompass inclusivity. We were able to brainstorm plenty of recommendations to which we tailored to focus specifically on mental health resource sustainability and accessibility. As our recommendations became a policy brief, we engaged our adult ally groups to offer insight and advice regarding our findings. This allowed us to fine-tune information and send it out into the community for support.
Right, now I'd like to go on to introduce our goals as a board. So, as you all are already aware of, mental health has become an increasingly hot topic following the pandemic, and our job is to ensure that that isn't a fad. Youth in Sacramento are now, more than ever, in need of mental health prevention and intervention, and we believe that the county should be the ones who advertise and provide these resources. In the initial phases of our brainstorming, we developed the following goals, which are: First, we want to provide resources and support for youth to access professional mental health services. We hope to create a safe environment, both physically and emotionally, that honors culture and community. We aim to promote equity, justice, and accountability, with a focus of directing resources towards youth with the most need, and we wish to empower families to engage in their children's mental health.
Our vision as a board is to create a community where all of Sacramento's youth are valued, and have direct access to mental health care and services both on and off school grounds. This policy brief is just an example of why we've all joined this board. The insights that we've received from our supporters from the past year and a half, and the research that we've put lots of time into systemic and sustainable structures, ensures that Sacramento's youth have proper, accessible mental health resources, and that Sacramento's youth are valued, and have direct access to mental health care both on and off school grounds.
In our time together, we have decided that there are two overarching mental health needs to be addressed: resource accessibility and sustainability. We are confident that Sacramento has several mental health resources, and we've received so many presentations on county, school, district, and CBO services. But as a board, it struck us how there were seemingly so many resources available, that we hadn't seen advertised in the places that we frequently stayed in as youth. So, we decided that advertising to increase youth access to resources is something that we really wanted to focus on. Another thing that we've learned in the past year is that Sacramento is well-known for breaking barriers in regards to access to mental health. While it's great that we're breaking down these barriers, it's quite disheartening that we still feel the need to celebrate the achievement of a basic human right that should already be universally accessible. This is why we're advocating for both accessibility and sustainability, in hopes that this policy brief cements that basic human right. While we would like to preface that our board is a behavioral health board, meaning our advice encompasses both mental health and substance misuse. You will notice that our policy recommendations do not directly address substance misuse. However, in advocating for support for mental health sustainability and accessibility, we want it to be acknowledged that these actions are indirect alcohol and drug prevention. The Mental Health Board believes that we should be commended for putting forward such pertinent recommendations that are evidence-based and practical. They have the potential to be highly effective in creating significant improvement in our students' lives.
Our proposed solutions of promoting accessibility to resources and services will enhance mental health prevention. Our recommendations intend to break barriers between systems, and in turn, strengthening sustainability of programs developed. So, our first policy recommendation is that the Board of Supervisors supports the county collaboration with the Office of Education in the recruitment of mental health practitioners on school campuses, and promotion of schools centers of wellness and restoration. As we learned from Superintendent Dave Gordon in early 2022, SCOWI has prioritized getting mental health clinicians on school campuses, and we find it crucial that the county assist in this recruitment. To quote Dave Gordon from his letter of support for the policy brief, "SCOWI is experiencing challenges that must be acknowledged as they strive to fulfill their commitment to revise school-based mental health prevention for youth across the county. It would take collaboration and collective impact to meet their commitment of placing over 300 clinicians on campuses. Additionally, youths spend most of their childhood on their school campuses. While schools are developed to enhance our education, we believe that schools must focus on the whole child, not just the education of youth. Therefore, we expand on our request for supporting the recruitment of mental health practitioners to include promoting schools as centers of wellness and restoration, not just as centers of education. And truth is, as much as we don't want it to be this way, harm is being done to and perpetuated by youth on and off school campuses. Youth are experiencing harm as a direct result of systemic exclusion and inequities. Engaging restoration as one of the components into these currently absent or lacking support structures will give youth the tools to address and repair harm, and promote a healthier sense of well-being. An implementation suggestion: Schools should provide wellness space on campuses and a staff member to coordinate services and agencies, but the actual cost of the services should be paid by local health agencies or nonprofits that bill medical alongside private insurance to ensure that all youth have access to services."
Next, for our second recommendation, we want to strongly encourage county collaboration with the state in developing and advertising telehealth programs for students to connect with those professionals and clinicians online. In order to meet the needs of our generation, it is very crucial to have mental health resources available in a way that meets our youth's comfort levels. We also want to stress how important it is for youth to have access to mental health professionals both on and off campus. From reading through CityRise surveys and listening in on Children's Care Committee hearings, we've learned that over 60% of youth prefer going to their peers to discuss their mental health before going to an adult or a clinician. And by pointing this out, we are by no means aiming to diminish the need for clinicians as they are professionals that we need to keep our youth properly informed and safe, but we just want to shed light on how youth need access to a digitally safe platform where they can discuss mental health matters with their own peers. The current telehealth platform that the State's Department of Health Services intends on rolling out for youths age 13 to 25 meets this need. We would like to ask our supervisors to ensure that, once the development of a telehealth program is made available, that we properly advertise it on youth-friendly platforms. Moreover, isolation and new age technology have led youth to different forms of communication than our preceding generations. In order to reach these youth, SCOWI believes that they must communicate in ways that are familiar to them. That is why SCOWI supports specifically the county collaboration with the state in the development of advertisements and telehealth programs, where students can connect with these professionals and clinicians online. SCOWI also vows to support advancing access for youth through youth-friendly telehealth development.
Our third recommendation is that the supervisors engage the county to collaborate with the Office of Education on providing mental health and harm reduction resources for school staff, parents, and students, to educate them on symptoms of and help them with mental problems. In other words, in wanting to focus on the whole child, we must also focus on the whole family, or the whole community. We understand that the youth are facing many adversities, and that those adverse childhood experiences take a toll on a person's physical and mental health. In order to sustainably combat these experiences, these adversities, we need to educate the entire support system surrounding a youth. Now, on some campuses across the county, mental health providers are working alone or in small groups to support a student body of over 1,500 students. The county must prioritize in providing youth with a support system of trusted adults. Educating our community as a whole will ensure that mental health prevention becomes normalized and habitual.
Lastly, we recommend engaging community-based organizations and the school system in advertisement of professional mental health services that can be accessible outside of school hours. The county should be the main entity held accountable for breaking barriers between systems. Our county, our school districts, and the community-based organizations all offer something different to youth, but are all equally important. We hope to see these three systems collaborate in advertising resources to ensure accessibility to all youth. Mental health prevention is as successful as it is accessible. We need to provide our youth with the ability to interact with resources at any given time. Mr. Gordon firmly believes that the recommendations in this policy brief have the capacity to create remarkable changes in students. These initiatives align with the mission and the interests of SCOWI, and Mr. Gordon continues to support our partnership to operationalize them. Many of the points presented in the Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board's policy brief, according to the Mental Health Board, are aligned with the recommendations approved by the Mental Health Board in February of 2022, titled "Improving School-Based Mental Health Services in Sacramento County," that focused on improving the student mental health service accessibility. It was recommended that SCOWI and the Sacramento County Department of Behavioral Health Services accelerate its Centers of Wellness program to increase mental health services in these schools. The BHS and the county mental health providers deliver information on platforms utilized by youth such as Instagram and TikTok, to ensure that its messaging is youth-friendly. Those were all of our recommendations today. We want to thank you again for your time this morning. We'd also like to thank the Children's System of Care Subcommittee for dedicating time and effort into developing a very thoughtful letter of support for our board's policy brief, and we'd like to thank the Mental Health Board for the unanimous support shown for our policy brief. And we'd also like to thank Supervisor Patrick Kennedy for getting the ball rolling and supporting us in instating this board. We now open the floor to any questions or comments.
And you will have, and you have some. There's some supervisors already queued up, but thank you. This is amazing, and incredibly impressive, the work you've done putting this together. I'll turn it over to Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Ms. Chair. So, I have to say, you know, on occasion, we, the board, have the experience of having young people in front of us, presenting on, you know, a whole variety of topics, but I have to say, the four of you are incredibly impressive. The way you've really outlined the presentation, and obviously, you've been very thoughtful about your work, and communicating the recommendations the way you did is something that most veteran older folks can't do as well as you've done this morning. So, I just wanted to start with the fact that I just find you four very, very impressive young people. I also have the opportunity to work alongside Superintendent Gordon. You've mentioned him multiple times in your presentation, and I can tell you that working together on the First Five Commission, the way we do, he oftentimes boasts about the great work that you're doing, and the fact that the concept of partnering between the county and our school districts in terms of providing mental health services and resources within our schools is something that he's extremely proud of, too. So, I feel I can go out on a bit of a limb and speak for him a bit about it, because he's obviously very proud of that, and so are we, and I can't thank you enough for, again, your service and your commitment to such an important topic. I think you've no doubt seen this morning, with the previous presentations on this being Mental Health Awareness Month, that we can't just think of mental health in terms of the adult population, but it is something that we- adult population, but it is something that we strive to enhance and provide resources for across the whole spectrum of age groups. And so you've very clearly articulated, I think, how we're doing that extremely well here in Sacramento County, again, due to your strong commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you very much, Chair, and I got to tell you goosebumps here. You know, when we started talking about this, and I want to thank also and give credit and a shout out to SCOWI Board Member Beena Lefkovitz, who we kind of came up with this idea one day, and the reason was, was the phrase kept coming into my head, you know, if you're not doing it with me, you're doing it to me. And there was no voice for youth that was really being heard from on this subject. Yet there's a lot of passion, as we can see here today and I see on school campuses all the time, for this subject. So, you know, right now, I'm like a proud father. My wife would probably point out more like a proud grandfather. But, you know, the work that you're doing, I remember being told when we were formulating the commission or the board, and somebody actually said to me, you know, what do kids know about these issues? I hope that person, as misguided as that judgment was back then, is watching this today because we can all learn a lot from you. We do learn a lot from you, so thank you for doing what you do and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
Well, I'm so impressed. I first want to thank you for your leadership, and I want to say I'm a little bit surprised because you show, you have the ability to almost create a business model. I mean, the way you approached the dilemma and the problem and the research that you did and the information that you sought from different, many different sources, the fact that you not only were reaching out to your peers but reaching out to adults to, you know, just gain wisdom, I'm just overwhelmed at what your contribution, and it gives you more credibility with me because I feel that you have really done the research and done the work and that your analysis is complete. So I want to congratulate you and thank you for your leadership and for your help because your board is in the advisory capacity and you give us a different perspective that is really important. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I won't take up too much of your time because I know you need to get back to whatever C-suite jobs you hold down, so. But seriously, I don't know that the world is prepared for you to be unleashed on it, and I'm so happy that you will be as you go forward in your careers and in your lives. And I am so thankful, as has been mentioned, that you came forward with tangible action items and an awareness of not only the issues and the challenges that you face but the partnership and the collaboration that needs to happen. And I had a meeting with my old friend Dave Gordon as well, and he is so impassioned about his program to try and get mental health clinicians on every school campus. And he recognizes the enormity of that task, and it's kind of like the story of the man that's throwing starfish back into the ocean when the whole beach is covered with them, and the other person says, "How can you help all these starfish?" And he picks one up and throws it back in and says, "I just helped that one." And so it's a series of small steps that lead to great outcomes. But, you know, you each showed such poise and such clarity in your thinking and in your presentation that I really salute you. And, you know, all of us on this dais grew up in the days before these things. And so when we would face challenges at school or we would face situations that were not nice, we were able to leave them behind and go home to our friends and to our families and to whatever hobbies. And now your generation has it following them everywhere they go till all hours of the night. And so as you pointed out in your presentation, the most powerful resource for each other is each other. And so I just commend you for stepping up, for taking this active role, and for pouring yourselves into the health and well-being of us all, really, certainly today and tomorrow and beyond. And so thank you for being here and thank you for sharing your time with us.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume, and I'll just certainly echo the comments of my colleagues and certainly with respect to the implementation suggestions that you have. I mean, it is remarkable that you are mindful of making recommendations that are practical, something that we can actually carry out. And I will certainly be following up with staff about some of these suggestions, and you've heard today that this board already has a very good relationship, obviously, with the Sacramento County Office of Education. So you've certainly given us a lot to think about, and your perspective is invaluable, certainly with respect to the access. I think you made a comment about all these resources that are out there, but a lot of times people don't know how to access them. It's very difficult. It gets intimidating, and we see this in a lot of different contexts. So thank you for really calling that out. And Savannah, most importantly, something I think you neglected to mention is that you are the appointee from District Three, my district, so I have bragging rights for that, so. Do we have any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Well, this is an information item for us today, so Savannah, did you have any closing thoughts?
Yes, before we go, we just wanted to know if it was possible if we could take a picture.
Absolutely.
Why stop now?
Yeah. Well, we have, our next two items are also, you know, informational items, and the bar has been set very high, so I hope you're aware of that.[1067.13][1067.13](laughing) With that, we'll move on to item 62.
Yes, item 62 is the presentation from Valley Vision regarding the Sacramento Region Economic Resilience Fund.
Morning, Evan.
Good morning. Hi, Evan Schmidt, CEO of Valley Vision. I think you probably just experienced the highlight of your morning, and now here's the presentation that's next.[1091.33][1091.33](laughing) And I also have to say, as an organization that regularly does needs assessment, I feel like we either need to recruit them or if they're successful in spinning up a business plan, then we need to watch out because they're going to take that over. That was an amazing presentation, incredible information, and I'm just really blown away. But I'm here to talk to you about the Community Economic Resilience Fund, which I do think is a fantastic opportunity for our region that I want to make sure you all are informed about. I know you're all familiar with Valley Vision, but just to set the stage for us, we're a nonprofit. We're right here in Sacramento, but we're regionally facing, and we advance social equity, economic prosperity, and environmental sustainability to create livable communities across our region. And we're known for collaboration and network management, actionable research, and the project I'm about to share with you involves all of those things. We also manage our region's prosperity strategy. This is our federally designated comprehensive economic development strategy. I'll talk a little bit more about the strategies therein later in the presentation, but this is a great foundation as we're, I'm here to talk to you today, about economic development in the region, and the prosperity strategy is really our framework for that. And so we'll get into that. So the Community Economic Resilience Fund, this is a one-time fund from the state of California. It's $600 million in total, and it is designed to create opportunities for regional economies across the state to advance inclusive economic development, and it's both a visioning and an implementation program. So when we look at the core values of what SURF is, and that's the acronym SURF, which is kind of fun for surfing or that kind of thing, so the idea is to do economic development a little bit differently than maybe what we've experienced before, and they were really clear about some of the key values of the program. So first, it needs to be focused on equity, really focused on disinvested communities, both in terms of involving people who have been left out of the process into the process as well as having outcomes that really align with the needs of disinvested communities across our region. This program is really geared towards job quality and access, so very much focused on creating jobs, but they have to be high-quality jobs. There's a look at how are we going to transition to a low-carbon economy across California? And so that's a particular focus of this program as well, is really looking at those opportunities that advance our low-carbon economy. Economic competitive and diversification, so this is an opportunity to look at our high-growth sectors and really think about how we're creating jobs that are accessible to all within those sectors. And then finally, economic resilience and recovery. This program came about after the pandemic, really thinking about how do we help create a platform for recovery in an equitable way as we move forward from where we are today. I mentioned that it's focused on regional economies, so this is our region. The state actually designated, or kind of split the state up into 13 different regions. This is ours, so we're in eight counties. This includes our kind of normal six-county SECOG region plus Calusa and Nevada counties. And I mentioned there's both a visioning part and an implementation part. So what we're kicking off right now, and we just got kicked off with this program last month, is the planning phase. So our region has $5 million to support planning, and what we're supporting is basically kind of two main things: building a really inclusive coalition across our eight counties and developing an investment strategy for inclusive economic growth. And these two things work together. So the collaborative is intended to really govern and create the priorities and conduct the decision-making in order to create this investment strategy. So if you look at the regional collaborative, the state has outlined that it needs to be a really diverse coalition, and they've mentioned some of the key stakeholder types that need to be a part of that coalition. And then by the end of our 15-month period, so we're wrapping up in August 2024, the planning phase, we need to have our regional economic plan. And that's where we really get the opportunity to flush out what projects, what priorities, what programs do we want to advance in this region to support those values that I just went through in the last slide. And this planning phase connects to an implementation phase, so the state has upwards of $500 million to support the priorities of regions across the state. And that's one of the things that makes this a unique program. It's not just make a plan and then figure out how to do it. They really are putting resources behind this planning phase and helping us advance our key priorities that we've identified. So I think this is a really transformational opportunity for our region. We get a pretty significant amount of resources in order to put energy into doing economic development planning in a different way than what we've done before. It's a really key time to be doing this. There's really historic investments across both federal and state government to support workforce, economic development, climate change adaptation, and other things. This can really give us an opportunity to identify what it is that we really need and take action on it. We get to elevate communities that are in need and activate supportive programs, so if you think about, you know, economic shocks to our system, all the change that's happening right now, this is a really important time to focus on those communities that are being left behind and figure out what kind of economic development strategies will work for them. And I think this is really, it is, you know, the planning phase is a one-time investment, but this really gives us some capacity to build some regional collaboration systems to like do a larger body of research than what we have now and really be able to launch from a really strong place with an investment strategy in place to be thinking about what are the big economic things that we want to do. And it does connect to the SURF implementation program, but it also connects to any other sources of funds that we might find. So I think thinking about the federal government, thinking about corporate, thinking about philanthropy, thinking about all kinds of ways we could fund these big asks that we create through this strategy and through this planning. And as we think about our eight counties, and particularly here in Sacramento County, we want to make sure that it's really relevant to the strategies and priorities that are already going on throughout the county. So I want to note that the last economic strategy for Sacramento County expired in 2017, and that this is a really great opportunity to leverage the SURF process in order to feed into those strategies and help advance that work. So some ways that that could happen, first of all, is through this work of identifying economic priorities. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the organizational structure, but one thing we're going to do is bring together kind of sub-geographies, so like smaller parts of our region to do planning and really surface priorities. So that could help support Sacramento County's goals. We're going to be doing a lot of research. In fact, we're just getting kicked off with that. That includes a SWOT analysis, labor market analysis, industry cluster analysis, climate adaptation analysis, public health, all kinds of stuff that the state's asking for that we can really use to benefit any county plans that need that. And then finally, a big piece of the planning phase is also community engagement. So as we're doing community engagement about these economic strategies, we can really align with Sacramento County and be thinking about what are the ways that the county wants to engage and what kind of questions do you want to ask and what kind of, you know, groups do you want to engage about your priorities. So we're not starting from scratch. There's, we already have a lot of economic strategies that are very alive and well, and this articulates some of them. These are the core strategies from the prosperity strategy. And there's three main high-growth sectors that have been identified already through that strategy, and that includes food and agriculture, health and life sciences, and then future mobility. And so these are three really opportunity areas for us to lean into right from the get-go and think about what are some ways that we can really operationalize strategies across our region that really focus on those who need it most when we're thinking about economic growth in these sectors. There's also, within these core strategies, a deep dive on workforce, so what kind of workforce ecosystem do we need to build? Creating a business-friendly environment, and I think when you think about entrepreneurialism and small business, that all falls within that framework. And then also thinking about our infrastructure investments, and we've been in close connection with SECOG as they're working through their blueprint process, but really thinking about how do we organize transportation, broadband, other infrastructure around our economic drivers in the region. So when we think about, you know, specific challenges to Sacramento County, although I think some of these are more general as well, workforce skills gaps, economic disparities, lack of access to capital and need for technical assistance for companies, all of these challenges can be met with some of the strategies and some of the work that we're planning on doing through SURF. So I think there's a lot of opportunity here to address core needs that we have as a region and as individual counties in that region. So I talked a little bit about how we're going to organize. We are going to start with the subregional approach. So one of the first things we want to do is bring these planning tables together around our sub-geographies. We have Sacramento MSA identified as one of those core geographies we want to organize around, and you can see the others, which include Yuba Sutter, Calusa County as a standalone, Truckee Tahoe, and then the Sierra foothills. So there's not a perfect way to slice this pie of eight counties that are really diverse, but we do want to create some kind of framework where we can really surface local needs and interests and then launch into larger regional strategies from there. And you can kind of see a little bit, this is a depiction of our governance structure, and so that includes a large collaborative, of which we currently have well over 100 agencies who have joined on, including Sacramento County, our subregional planning tables, a focus on priority communities, including disinvested communities, tribes, non-native English speakers, communities of colors, other priority populations, and then thinking about some of the functional things that we'll need support with, including research, community engagement, capacity building, and technical assistance. So our ask of the Sacramento County is to participate in our coalition, and you're already signed on as a member of our coalition, but to really actively participate and help us surface those economic priorities, help us reach out to stakeholders, help make sure that the right stakeholders from Sacramento County are around the table, and help us kind of communicate as we go through this process. We've listed here some of the Sacramento County coalition members. I don't think this is fully comprehensive, but we have great representation from Sacramento County. We would love your help if this list looks incomplete to you and you have ideas for us. We're still doing outreach regularly and trying to, you know, continue to build this coalition as needed. So our next step, building a strong and cohesive coalition, so again, doing that outreach. Right now, we're just advancing some key research objectives and putting our governance structure together, and we're planning in June to do a more comprehensive launch with the whole coalition and really get down to that priority planning. So I really thank you for your time and attention. Looking forward to doing this work, and I hope we can all really benefit very much from this opportunity in front of us.
Thank you, Evan. I'll have some questions and comments. First, I'll turn to Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Evan, it's great meeting you on the cap-to-cap trip here recently. And speaking of cap-to-cap, I'd speaking of cap-to-cap, I just want to extend my gratitude to Trish Kelly for the work that she did on the Food and Ag team, really representing a new model for the region. But that's what I wanted to bring to your attention as you solicit other stakeholders, is by sector, agriculture is the largest economic driver in Sacramento County, if not that six-county region that you, you mentioned, you know, $450 million annually. And I don't see them represented here, and I think that's such an opportunity for a lot, checks a lot of those boxes that this program seeks to, to empower and enhance. And so to any extent I can be a conduit to, to help bring those stakeholders into the fold, it's a great, great opportunity for, you know, I know there's some areas within the healthcare field and within the school districts of looking to try and support local agriculture through the Cash and Lou program and others, and so anything I can do to connect you, I'd look forward to doing that.
That would be fantastic. I appreciate that, and I agree that the food and ag sector is really, to me, high priority for this opportunity. So, you know, connecting, being connected with additional stakeholders would be fantastic.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume, and a couple of questions I had for you, Evan, thank you, and this is, I look forward to, to hearing regular progress reports about your work, and certainly I'm interested in Sacramento County's involvement in the effort. And disinvested, disinvested communities, I'll also start rolling that into my, my presentations I give, and a lot of the communities that I represent, that we represent here collectively, a lot of those disinvested communities are, happen to be unincorporated communities, whether that's Delta, or South SAC, or, or North Highlands area. And can you, you know, you talked, you touched on this a little bit about how you'll get more, you know, kind of spoke, focus on geographic or other priority areas. Any, any thought about that, about how you might be engaging in the planning process, identifying needs in the unincorporated areas specifically? Because these are areas that don't have good representation, right? They haven't historically had a really good voice to advocate for them.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point, and we, you know, in terms of our engagement aren't prioritizing one over the other, you know, whether it's a city or an unincorporated area, but I do acknowledge that's harder to kind of find the right folks and get involved in the right ways, and I definitely recognize that our rural communities and our unincorporated communities are often those kind of underrepresented folks. So I would, you know, really lean on, on you a little bit to help us think about, like, who are those, who are those people that really need to be involved? I know in all of our engagement strategies, we're really thinking about what are the ways that we kind of get out to where people are, get the input that we need, and make sure that's really integrated as we, as we put priorities forward. I also think, you know, through the research that we're doing, making sure that we're not overemphasizing metro areas and, and finding those data sources from our rural and unincorporated will be really important. So looking forward to continuing to report back, and I want to, you know, really keep our eye on that issue.
And I'd love to follow up with you on that specifically, and, and I think, you know, some of, they're not listed as, as specific participants, but, but working, reaching out to local chambers of commerce, some of these geographical chambers that are in these unincorporated areas, that a lot of times they don't have a big footprint, footprint, but they're doing really important work, and sometimes they're the only game in town in some of these communities, as well as some of the P-bids, you know, certainly in, well, all over Sacramento County, of course. And then I also think to myself about some of our, I'm glad you mentioned our economic development plan, which has not been updated in such a long time, but also talking about how some of the efforts we're making on our development process improvements, and how that might, might be complementary with some of the, some of your efforts, certainly the SURF efforts, you know, in the unincorporated area. So I'd love to have a follow-up meeting with you about this, Evan, and just some ideas I have, and so just very much appreciate it. I do think it would be nice to have maybe some representation from an elected, from the county, on the, on the, on the body that you, that you described at the end of your presentation as well, but, so please reach out so we can maybe set up a meeting to talk more.
I'd love that, thank you.
There, it doesn't look like there's any other supervisors with comments, any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, well, this is an informational item, and Evan, thank you very much for being here, and look forward to continued discussions, and thank you for your work.
You too, thank you so much.
Okay, just make sure we're on time. Okay, item 63 is Senate Bill 823, Division of Juvenile Justice, realignment in Valley Oak Youth Academy.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Thank you to Valley Vision for a little space and time from that youth presentation, I was like, oh no, like, you know, you don't follow kids or animals, is, you know, the thing I'm always reminded of, and really impressive, you know, I was listening a little bit out there, I was like, wow, like, you know, can I take a break, you know, can we, we take a break? So anyway, so thank you, appreciate the opportunity to provide an update regarding Senate Bill 823. You know, it's, it's an important piece of policy, obviously, certainly has public interest, and I think, you know, as it relates to our response locally and the practices we've been, we've put in place, you know, I'm glad to hear, you know, of your interest, as well as, you know, eager to share sort of the, the updates as well as challenges. So I'll do a little bit of context as it relates to the bill itself, and just what it requires of us, and how we've met some of those challenges. So I'll try to avoid reading much of the PowerPoint to you. In, in the most brief terms, the state has chosen to close its Division of Juvenile Justice. This is a state-run facility that typically would house the most serious youth offenders across the state of California. They're closing their doors literally next month, June 30th, and with that, you know, comes about this, this concept of realigning that responsibility to counties across the state. Speaking, you know, as it relates to the other probation departments across California, you know, the, the goal is not to build 58 or 50, because there's only, I think, about 50 juvenile halls, or counties with juvenile halls, I should say, not to, not to reconstitute them locally, but really think through what it is, you know, each county system needs, and how best to address the, what are the complex needs of youth in the, in the system at this, this juncture.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Hume.
If I could interrupt, Chief, real quick. So currently, is it, my understanding that there's a singular state facility, or are there many?
There, there's one system, there historically have been two or three locations. Currently, I believe there's only one still in operation in Stockton, but historically, I want to say in Chino, I think there was also a separate site, there was also, I think, a girls' facility dedicated, obviously, to, to young women, but those, I believe, those two Southern California sites, I believe, have already closed, and those youth have been shifted north.
And, you know, I don't want to get too far ahead of your presentation, but I suspect you'll tell us what those populations are, and how much this is beginning to make me twitch, because it feels like 109 all over again, but in a slightly different context.
Yes, yeah, it does have a little bit of that feeling, Supervisor, I think you're, you're accurate with your, your feelings, I have similar feelings and concerns about it. You know, again, not to get too far ahead, you know, but for, I think, really the work we've done here locally to transform the way our juvenile hall operates, the youth detention facility, how YDF operates, and all the vast partnerships, whether it be County Office of Education, you know, I saw Director Lutz and Dr. Quist here, you know, our efforts with health and behavioral health, you know, but for those things, and the creativity of, you know, the staff and team, like, we might not be in such a great position, but, you know, I'm pretty excited and hopeful, just given, again, what we're able to leverage that we can, you know, perhaps have greater success here. So as mentioned, DJJ, Division of Juvenile Justice is closing, it requires then counties to establish their own secure youth treatment facilities. A big switch for us, which we've already been impacted with, is the extension of the age of jurisdiction within the juvenile court. So previously, we would house youth in our YDF up to age 18, the new laws have now extended that age up to 25, which then creates a whole host of other challenges, if you will, as we think through, whether it be diet, you know, education, vocation, connectivity to family, or maybe it's a significant other, you know, boyfriend, girlfriend, we've had to contemplate and think through, you know, potential of youth at some point maybe asking to be married, and so lots of challenges, and again, shifting really what we, what we were, in my estimation, very good at in terms of running a juvenile facility, it's really shifting to become more of a young men and young women's facility.
Excuse me, Chief, Supervisor Hume.
Sure.
Thank you. So I guess my first reaction is, how do you functionally mix minors and adults? Because for ever, we're, you know, that's kind of the, one of the golden rules you don't do when it comes to these types of systems, correct?
Correct, correct, and, you know, it's, it's a huge challenge for us. Not to lament, I think, the construction of Senate Bill 823, you know, I think as it's publicly known, you know, the chiefs were not in support of it. As it was being crafted, the subject matter experts, probation, were really not at the table and not included, and so there are lots of pitfalls or areas, such as what you just pointed out, Supervisor. One of the biggest being, how do you handle a population of youth, now young adults, just given the, the limitations of existing juvenile halls across the state? Ours being no exception, it's really been a huge challenge for us, and I'll talk a little bit later about an even more complex piece of this regarding sight and sound separation. And so maybe I'll just jump into it now.
I would also imagine that because this legislation is requiring counties to mix minors and adults, that that comes with additional costs, that we wouldn't otherwise incur if it was just, you know, just minors.
Yeah, absolutely. So with the change in law, it does sort of redefine who is a juvenile, and so we're able to house those individuals who still, who are still under the jurisdiction of the juvenile court together. But that said, I think as a best practice, we recognize, you know, the 25-year-olds should probably not be housed with the 13-year-old, and so doing our best to manage that population, their individual respective needs, you know, does complicate things and does lead to, again, trying to ensure both the safety of the youth, safety of the facility, but also supporting each of their unique needs as it relates to rehabilitation. The point I reference as, you know, a huge challenge for us, so with the returning population, youth who are currently at the Division of Juvenile Justice coming back to us in custody, there is a segment of them, and you'll see a slide later, where several of them have committed offenses while in custody, those cases have been resolved, they've gone through adult court and have been sentenced to prison. And so their prison commitment, sentencing thereof complicates this work even further, as there's federal law that states, you know, anyone who essentially has touched a juvenile facility, excuse me, touched an adult facility or adult institution shall not be housed with those who have not. And so for us, again, with that returning population, it's made it very complex, how do we handle the six who are coming back to us who've been to prison already? And we're, we're working through that as we speak, working with stakeholders, leadership across California, both the Board of State and Community Corrections, as well as CSAC, specifically California State Association of Counties, and the Juvenile Justice State Advisory Group, to, to work with the federal government around some relief in that area, because for me, that becomes essentially a unit dedicated all to just those six youth who are returning to us.
Who, Chief, who, who was the principal author of this legislation?
Great, great question, you know, I'm not certain, we, we've toured a lot of folks through our juvenile hall, and there have been a number, number of people that raised their hands and say, oh, you know, I was the chief architect, and then, you know, the next week, like, oh, you know, I helped write that, and it's like, okay, you know, again, not to get too far off topics, Supervisor, but none of them, in my estimation, are experts in this area, so just kind of like it-
I think that part's clear.
Explains why we are where we are. So I referenced the, the age of jurisdiction shifting upwards, and some of the impacts to the facility. Along with this responsibility, responsibility comes funding, and you've heard me previously state in prior presentations that it's never enough when you hear the words realignment, and I'll talk a little bit about the, the formula. To help with regards to the local planning efforts, each county has had to establish a Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council Subcommittee. We have one that exists, very pleased with it, it includes representation across all of the stakeholders, you know, the, the usual entities, both probation, myself as chief, I am the chair, but includes representatives from the District Attorney's Office, public defender, County Office of Education, behavioral health, four public members as well, who I think have been really good about providing perspective and ideas that have helped enrich our, our planning efforts. So I referenced the formula, again, just a little bit here, and you'll see perhaps another pitfall within the legislation, so it takes into account proportionate, on a proportionate basis, 30% being comprised of the total DJJ commitments for jurisdiction, 50% the county's proportion of serious and violent crime by youth, and lastly, 20% is made up of the county population ages 10 to 17. And I say there's a bit of a pitfall here, because with that first element, the percent of total DJJ commitments, once they've closed their doors, that component essentially goes away, and so the formula will have to be reestablished going forward beyond the '23, '24 fiscal year. You also have there a little bit of a grid, if you will, you get a sense of what our proportionate allocation has been. I will note also, each of those first two years, so fiscal years '21, '22, and '22, ' '23, those amounts are different than what was initially projected for us, as the state has had to recalculate and redistribute the allocations across, across, across California, I should say, Department of Finance has had to recalculate those. For us, fortunately, our amount has gone up, which is, you know, helpful, and so for '23, '24, that is the original projected amount that we expect to receive at this point, though should it be recalculated, as with the prior two fiscal years, that, that number's likely to go up. So I'll talk next a little bit about our efforts locally, and the Valley Oak Youth Academy, the program that we've stood up inside of our youth detention facility. So program essentially is, is intended to provide a safe place for youth, we recognize that these are youth, again, at the farthest end of the continuum, who have complex needs. The idea is to support positive outcomes by all, within all of the programs that we build and use to address those needs. Within the legislation, there are also some goals that counties are required to address within the planning efforts, I should state, so those being reducing transfers of youth to the adult criminal justice system, reducing racial and ethnic disparities, just recognizing, you know, by and large, all of the youth in the system are black and brown, I think our number is about 85% African-American and Latino combined. And then lastly, reducing confinement in the juvenile justice system, which something not new to us, none of these really being new to us, but remains a huge, huge challenge. So the program services, I'll, again, try to avoid reading to you, you have some sense there of, of just everything that's involved, so it's, it's many things that we've done historically, traditionally within our youth facility, but also things that we've really worked hard to build out even further, many of which involve our partners. So I'll talk just briefly about mental health services first, really pleased with behavioral health, and Dr. Quist, as a member of our, of our Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council Subcommittee, has been a great partner. Historically, we've had six clinicians dedicated to the youth facility, and with this new responsibility, we've sought to add, I think, three at this point, perhaps more going forward, I know budget's on the horizon for all of us, just to address what we know are, again, the treatment needs of youth. Given some of the obvious challenges you all are aware of as it relates to recruitment and hiring across the county, probation certainly has been impacted by that, as has behavioral health. We're also very fortunate to have a partner like Stanford Sierra Youth Solutions, who's been able to pick up really where the vacancies within behavioral health have left off, and so fortunately, we've had a longstanding relationship with them, with, as a provider in the community, as it relates to cognitive-based treatments, and we're able to leverage that contract amended, and actually bring them inside the facility to begin treatment with youth, just recognizing that we could not wait for hiring to occur, and so really, really pleased with them as a, as a partner as well. And so the, the treatment aspect of this, which is one of the most important, I will say, includes everything from assessment through crisis intervention, the cognitive-based classes, individual, group, and family treatment and counseling, but also- classes, individual, group, and family treatment and counseling, but also addresses the life skills, the social skills of youth who are in the program. Another partner that I'll, I'll highlight just briefly, because it's really something that I enjoy touting, it's the medical aspect of our, our facility. So I think we're one of just a few juvenile halls across the state that has its own clinic, 24/7 clinic, medical clinic within the facility. Ours happens to be nationally accredited as well, which is another feather in our cap. And it includes really just the, the full array of services that you might expect in the community, being provided, being provided for youth in custody. So includes both health screenings and education, immunizations, and certainly it was pivotal, pivotal as it relates to, to COVID and vaccinations there, but also routine medical care. We have the ability to isolate youth who maybe can't be housed in general population, includes specialty care as well. We also have dental and vision onsite, as well as psychiatric care within the facility. So again, comprehensive array of services as it relates to both medical and mental Another very important partner, and it was nice to hear, I think, several of you comment as it relates to County Office of Education, as well as the Youth Advisory Board from BHS talking about the, you know, Superintendent Gordon, you know, close friend of mine, but certainly just a huge, huge ally as it relates to this work. We're very fortunate, the team that he has, who we work with on a daily basis, you know, the principals specifically within our, our El Centro High School and Junior High School inside of YDF, just outstanding individuals. And again, where I referenced sort of the ability to leverage many things we've done historically, you know, we've had college programming inside the facility for some time, we've had both culinary and construction programs offered. And so, you know, those become things that we can build on, and so really excited about the future as it relates to, to education. You know, when I'm talking to the kids in custody, I am always clear with them, you know, education is really a game changer. And so as they, you know, sort of pursue, whether it be the career technical education aspect, or perhaps, you know, the two-year or four-year degree opportunities, you know, for me, the message is really, this can help change your trajectory in life. And so provided they have that interest, it's our jobs to then sort of meet them where they are and, and address and provide opportunities for them to learn. I believe the numbers right now I have in my head, we, we have roughly 30-plus youth who've already completed their high school equivalency, which then means they have the opportunity to engage in college programming, and I think there are 30 to 40 youth who are already currently participating in our, our SOAR program, our Students Achieving Academic Responsibility, or our college programming. Of note, about a month ago now, I guess, we had our very first youth complete his AA, his Associate of Arts degree while in custody. That maybe isn't the, the greatest thing to celebrate. What, what I'm more excited about is the fact that he's also been accepted to SAC State and has housing already lined up. And so for us, it's about, you know, how can we ensure and provide the court enough trust to allow that youth maybe to get released, to entertain and engage in that educational opportunity, you know, whether that means, you know, summer session, or that means maybe in the fall, we're, we're literally working through that as we speak. Also, in addition to education, again, I just referenced SCOWI being such an important partner, we've connected them to a program called the Prison, Prison, excuse me, Prison Education Program, which includes a, a whole host of volunteers who come in and are able to teach youth soft skills, everything from study habits to introductory college courses, things that would really prepare them for what college curriculum looks like. And so that program is beginning as we speak, as is sort of a, a more vast array of CTE programs. So thinking through, you know, the, the interest of kids, because we also take to heart, obviously, what the youth are able to provide to us in the way of feedback and what their areas of interest are. You know, I, I tell them all, like, you know, you, you can't be a barber, one, because the chief can't come in and get a haircut, like, I don't need that. But barbering is also, as I understand it, given the, you know, workforce stats, very competitive and a very long training program. And so, you know, telling them like, ah, you know, you maybe can pursue barbering, but don't let that be the core, like, let's think through, you know, where the industry is moving. And so things like, you know, forklift driving, or, you know, broader array of construction efforts, like electrician apprenticeship programs, and so really engaging them in that regard is, has been good. In addition to what I, what I referenced in the way of partnerships with medical, mental health, and education, there's also a whole host of community-based organizations that we work with, and this really gets at what was on the prior slide, I think, in relation to, you know, life skills, positive youth development, what we all know that youth need, and so could not be more pleased with, you know, really the, the wide array of entities that are both historically partners of ours inside of YDF, but also those we've added since. And so it includes everyone from, you know, instruction on alternatives to violence, our work with the Anti-Racism Coalition, Gang Awareness and Prevention, or GAP, the entities that are involved in creative writing for kids. I referenced some of the unique aspects of our facility, we're one of a few that just, you know, I think in the state, that also has a boy, fully functioning boys and girls club inside. And then things like our foster grandparents program, which again, provides kind of that, that more supportive aspect of the work. Just a few photos, if you will, so planner boxes, as you can see there, and obviously construction down there. I'd be remiss if I did not mention, last week as well, I think I ran into Supervisor Hume at the Construction Industry Education Foundation's Design-Build Competition. This is the second year that the youth at El Centro have submitted an entry. Last year, we submitted a shed, and I think we got an honorable mention, and I was like, oh, we gotta make sure our kids in custody see what the, what the, the landscape looks like and the creativity that exists across all the other, you know, comprehensive high schools. And so this year, I think we've submitted an entry that is a greenhouse that we will utilize, obviously, within the facility and help with our, our programming, of course. And so excited about that partnership as well. The swimming pool, I'll turn to the team, I think it, it operates from Memorial Day through Labor Day, is that right? Someone's telling me yes, thank you Assistant Chief Wary. And so importance of this slide really is a reminder to thank Department of General Services and Jeff Gassaway. You know, we're very busy inside of the facility, gets a lot of use, it's getting more use, obviously, as the population creeps up with this new responsibility. And so when you hear that the pumps at the pool are going to be down, and the pool might not be operational until fall, like, oh no, like, I'm on the phone with Jeff, trying to figure out how we can, you know, remedy this. And so really a nod to DGS and their team, they're probably tired of me calling, probably tired of my, my team calling, but it's really because we have to ensure things like this remain operable, because the kids look forward to it. You know, there, there aren't any of us who haven't seen a youth who spent a day in a pool and realizes, you know, at the end of the day, nobody wants to fight, nobody's really arguing, they just want a snack and maybe a nap. So thank you to DGS for figuring that out, you know, we're, we're hopeful that they'll be able to help us with some of the other opportunities to address the facility's needs, both as it relates to improvements, as well as just regular maintenance, routine maintenance. We've received a couple grants that are specifically focused in this area, so one helped us to address that, that top photo there, the field that you see, the north field inside the facility. So we've been able to add drainage to it, add an all-weather track to it, and then separately, we received another larger grant of about $3 million to address facility improvements more widely. And so we hope to replace that grass, which I think might still be brown right now, with some all-weather turf, and maybe replace the all-weather track with a rubberized surface. So just want to, again, echo their, their responsiveness.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor.
With regard to the pool, Chief, is there still a lifeguard certification?
There, there is Supervisor, there is, you have a great memory. You know, the pool becomes a, a great tool for us, and you know, it's not just the, the recreation that I referenced, you know, it's obviously incentivized, so kids look forward to it, but lifeguarding occurs, as does baptisms for youth who may be interested in it. So, you know, long history of chaplaincy program inside the facility, and when, you know, kids are interested in, you know, if they're under 18, parents get permission, we're able to use it for, for that purpose as well. So again, pool's gotta, you know, filter's gotta stay clean, gotta stay operational.
Well, and just when you were talking about, first of all, a snack and a nap sounds really good right now, but-
Agreed, agreed.
But, you know, and talking about the pool, it reminds me of a comedian that said, money can't buy happiness, but it can buy a jet ski, and I've never seen anyone frowning on a jet ski, and it's kind of the same thing, like, just having that sense of normalcy to, to, you know, enjoy a pool for an afternoon.
Very true Supervisor, you know, we were touring our law enforcement partners through the facility, many of whom took us up on a tour, I don't know, maybe two months ago now, and my messaging is, like, all of these kids are going home, despite what they've done, and some have done the worst things, they are all going home. So we've got to figure out, you know, how to do that rehabilitation the right way, just knowing that they're going back to a community that we all share. So reentry, something that probation's been squarely focused on for a long time, we've, we've been a model in many respects, as we recognize reentry, just what I was stating, begins day one, you know, doesn't begin when your date of release is getting close, it begins, you know, the day that you may be committed to the program. And so utilizing all the partners across the, the system to establish multidisciplinary teams to help not just with case planning, but also reentry goals for each youth has helped. Within that, also recognizing our own lessons learned over time, and that youth voice and choice are an important part of case planning. And so engaging family as well as the youth as it relates to, you know, what they think they need, what they think their strengths are, what can they use help with. Much of that has helped drive, obviously, our reentry programming. And so I referenced, you know, we've been sort of a model, there's an entity called Performance-Based Standards that looks at facilities all across the country, and I think we're the, still the only three-time award winner on the detention continuum or category, and we've since moved over into the correctional category, just given that our, our population and responsibilities are shifting a bit, and so we hope to be competitive there as well. But they knew and observed quickly that, you know, within our facility, we were obviously prioritizing reentry, and because of it, took a hard look at what we, what we've done, and have used that to help establish reentry standards for the rest of the country. In addition to that, I'm also privy to the, the observations and comments made by the now former director of the parole board, as we are really one of the only counties who, when youth were committed to the Division of Juvenile Justice, our officers continued to make, make the effort to stay engaged and visit youth while in custody, still visit youth and participate in that multidisciplinary team planning efforts that I referenced, when DJJ was responsible for the, for the same challenge that we are up against. And so, again, we'd like to think we've got a lot of things to leverage in regards to our, our challenges here. So a little bit about numbers, I know Supervisor Serna, you're, you're asking a little bit about this, and I got, maybe got a little bit of a, little bit ahead, but just so that folks hear where we're at today. So there've been 32 youth committed to Voya at this point, we've already had five youth released, and we currently have two youth at the Pine Grove Fire Academy. And so Pine Grove's been in existence for a long time, and they, they are going to continue to operate, and so we are feverishly working to identify additional segments of the population to offload some of the responsibilities that we have, and maybe send or refer a few youth who are appropriate for that, that programming. Doesn't necessarily mean that, or entail that youth, you know, have to have the interest in becoming firefighters, it's really a chance to be outside, a less secure setting, participate in teamwork, and learn skills, and work with a team, and take direction from adults in a different environment other than, than in a carceral setting, if you will. The last half of that slide references the number of youth that still remain at DJJ who are coming back to us in custody. So we've already started the jurisdictional transfer hearings for that population, several of whom already are with us in custody, so it's made our population begin to tick up a bit. And you'll see the middle bullet on the bottom half there, four youth being ineligible for commitment to our Valley Oak Youth Academy. And what that references is that with the change in law, there are a handful of youth who have committed offenses that maybe now would not be eligible to be committed to a secure track. So you have to figure out a different course with them, or they were too young to be committed to the secure track. So we have both of those examples within that, that number four there. And as referenced previously, the six youth at state prison brings with it a whole host of challenges. You know, I'd be remiss were not to just mention, you know, the efforts of the staff to, again, keep kids safe with this shift and with kids coming back to us in custody. Unfortunately, some youth have picked up and learned bad habits from youth from other jurisdictions while in the state's care and custody, and it's really working to compromise both, you know, our efforts, the other youth's efforts who are engaged in rehabilitation, but also the safety of some youth. And so we've had, you know, for lack of a better term, prison politics really impacting our day-to-day, and so that remains something we're vigilant about addressing.
Excuse me, Chief, a question, so just as a follow-up to some of the discussions you and I had a few months ago about other counties coming to Sacramento County probation wanting to speak to you, and this is partially because I think our, our Sacramento County probation is, is well ahead of the game, but also in recognition of the fact that some of these counties have very small populations of youth affected by this, and so they're looking, instead of setting up their whole program within their own county, they're looking at larger counties to maybe help them out. Can you give an update on any of those, are any of those discussions ongoing, gaining traction? Give us a little thumbnail sketch about what's going on.
Sure, sure, I think you're, you're absolutely right. You know, I referenced that, you know, amongst the chiefs, we, we talk about not trying to replicate what the state was doing, and that it, you know, to bring things to scale of, you know, similar to what we're doing, I, I don't think, you know, many counties can afford to do that, just given the, whether it's the, the allocation that I talked about in the way of funding, or just the physical space, you know, the physical plant itself has limitations. For us, I recognize in the region, you know, we're, we're probably the, the most significant operator, if you will, of youth detention, and so I recognize that many counties will, you know, at some point have an interest in, in asking or pleading, begging, you know, if we might be, consider, you know, housing their youth. I've spoken publicly, and I think there's some information out in the, the public domain as it relates to Yolo County's specific interest in partnering with us. And I'll just say, at this point, those conversations have all been suspended largely on their part, as I think they've realized, like, you know, they maybe don't need to go so fast, you know, they could slow down and perhaps take their time to figure out, you know, whether it is right to, again, pursue, you know, a contract for beds, if you will, which I'm grateful for, the pause, because again, as our numbers creep up, some of those programs that I referenced that are in repurposed, you know, units within the facility, we'd have to rethink, like, how do we, you know, still do this if the number, you know, again, continues to increase, and then would occupy essentially a unit that I would need for housing youth.
Right.
So something like our Boys and Girls Club, or our library, you know, we have a fully functioning library, like, those things may have to be, you know, placed in a portable or do, you know, we may have to, again, just rethink differently how to go about that implementation.
Yeah, as you mentioned to me, I mean, it's such a challenging population and so resource-intensive, how would we even go about structuring a contract for any kind of reimbursement? I mean, it's just fraught with challenges, and it is, it's interesting how the state, at the state level, they wanted to decentralize DJJ, but now the counties are struggling to to re-centralize it again in regional areas or within larger counties, it's just-
I, I do appreciate that, you know, it does speak to kind of the, again, I referenced the opposition the Chiefs had with Senate Bill 823, and just, it is a little head-scratching to see where we're at now, and, you know, having to build out, you know, 50 different college programs, and having to build out, you know, sex offender treatment, and cognitive-based treatments, and, you know, just, again, a little bit of a head-scratcher. As it relates to, to the population, you know, certainly, interest in outcomes, I think, is important. You know, I referenced in the slide, you know, five youth released, I think we've had one of those youth returned to us briefly for a violation already, but the other four, the other four have not to this point, so we're, we're hopeful that we'll continue that trend of, you know, just very few youth violating, but we certainly recognize, you know, this is maybe the most challenging population in the system. You know, we all understand certainly the challenges of youth development anyway, but when you overlay that with involvement in the juvenile justice system, it just brings another, you know, piece of complexity, certainly another stressor in a household, and so we're very much mindful that this population needs extra care, and, you know, small caseload sizes, et cetera. I wrote, sorry, I referenced outcomes, and so as it relates to, you know, the biggest being just obviously, you know, hoping that youth do not reoffend and remain, obviously, in compliance with their terms and- youth do not reoffend and remain, obviously, in compliance with their terms and conditions. But we'll be looking at everything from their lengths of stay, their time in the commitment program, their, you know, progress as it relates to completing treatment, et cetera, and using all of that to help define what success may look like ultimately, in addition to educational outcomes, of course. So just briefly, catching folks up on where we're at, currently three housing units for supervision. The board, thank you very much for approving a mid-year request to stand up that third housing unit for us, to help sort of provide a, a little bit of pressure relief, just given the, the concerns with housing that we've touched on already. It's also supported everything you see there, everything from, again, more of a variety of educational and vocational opportunity. Treatment needs, but then very specifically and perhaps unique to us, the ability to resource both a community advocate and service coordinator position, something that our community partners have identified as value-added for our planning. And so we're excited that those may come to fruition at some point as we build out what a job description for each of those may look like. And then lastly, dedicated support from the Public Defender's Office also being included in our plan, which I think is unique. As it relates to the future, we're anticipating, at the very least, a fourth housing unit. So you'll likely see something in budget from us that includes that, if not a fifth, you know, I do fear for that, but that could become a reality as well, again, as just continuing to build out educational services, behavioral health, treatment, reentry supports, et cetera. Lastly, I'll just touch on the, the need for more robust step-down opportunities. So as youth make their way through the program, earn their levels, you know, get to the point where, where release is being discussed and reentry is now more of a reality, thinking through, how can we begin to step down and transition them back to the community in a thoughtful way? And so I referenced Pine Grove as one opportunity. We're in conversations with, with the Department of Rehabilitation as well as California Conservation Corps also, who may be able to help us in this area. And that's not to mention that, not to forget, I should say, that we have already begun to step youth down in custody, just given some of the programming that we've built, allowing youth to obtain jobs while in custody, which I think we have never done before. And so kids earning, you know, essentially program dollars, or they can then turn around and use to purchase items that they might want at the point of reentry. You know, if they want the, the new shoes or the jeans or, you know, whatever it is, they can, you know, begin to acquire employment and earn a little bit of wage to help, help with that transition. And lastly, again, apologize for taking so long, but lastly, we continue to seek out, you know, other partners. And so the work is complex, as I mentioned, and does not come without challenges, but, you know, we continue to look to the public, other partners, certainly the business community around, whether it be jobs, internships, you know, ways that we might partner, again, just to help successful reentry for this population. So I'll stop there. I think I've talked enough, and see if you have additional questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Yes, I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Chief. I wish it was better news, because I, I look at this as yet another cumulative challenge for us in the space of corrections here. You mentioned some step-down opportunities. I'm going to look to my right, and maybe one of our executive team can refresh my memory, but is it Cal Fire that is going to be or is leasing portion of the Boys Ranch for their operations? So if that isn't on your radar currently, that might be yet another opportunity for how these young people might get back into the community and have maybe some vocational opportunities around wildland firefighting. So I just wanted to make sure that, that was something that you're aware of.
It is, and I am aware, looking forward to it being stood up. The programming with Cal Fire, I think, includes their training academy, if I remember correctly. And so certainly, you know, an opportunity for youth who, who raise their hand and want to continue into that, that field.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Chief, I just want to recognize and acknowledge the, the members of your staff that you have with you here today and the great work that they're doing. I appreciate you all being gracious enough to have given me a tour of the YDF and the Voya program in particular, and, and some of those, the one pod that you've repurposed into educational and vocational training, as well as the library and some of the other amenities that have been stood up. I, I think I, I'm glad that I didn't know until after the tour was over what it meant when the young men were asked to stand with their toes against the wall as we walked by, but, but it's good to know that now. And then, you know, one of the things that I think I brought up that day, and if not, I'll bring it up now, is, you know, the, the shelter, the animal care and regulation is right around the corner. And I know that animal husbandry, husbandry programs have shown great promise with instilling values of compassion and responsibility and, and kind of the synergy of a little bit of affection. And vet techs are in high demand these days. And so I would ask that whatever we can do with county departments, we, I mean, we have a whole gamut of, of things that we do within this organization, any opportunity we have for some synergy of, of trying to, to show them a little better life, you know, as they, they transition out, as well as potentially taking advantage of, you know, that, that potential workforce that would benefit us as well. So, but if we can stand up those kind of programs, I don't want to put more work on your plate as you're talking about, you know, something that the state's already putting on us, but.
Not at all, Supervisor, actually. Thank you, actually. You stole my thunder a bit with the appreciation from my staff, so let me stay on that first. You know, when I'm, when I'm up here or, you know, I'm working with the community and we come up with, as I say, the, the crazy idea, like, it's easy for me to come up with the crazy idea, but it's really all of those folks back there who help, you know, cash that check, as I say. So kudos to them for making, you know, all the crazy ideas into reality. And, you know, and if I bump into something and it's like, oh, well, we can't quite do that, but what about this? They're really, really just incredibly innovative. You know, everyone from the chief deputy, Maria Gonzalez, to the team that's back there really make it happen on a daily basis. And so to your point, as it relates to employment, we, you know, I didn't talk about it at length, but we do have a similar thought as it relates to, you know, generating potentially portions of the county workforce. And so I've already had conversations with Parks and Rec, as well as the animal shelter, Liz Bellis and Annette Bedsworth specifically, around training youth, teaching youth while in custody, and maybe get to the point where we can have a youth perhaps spend part of their day learning and working, you know, in their operations. And so both of them very receptive to that idea. We just haven't got there yet, but it's certainly something we are pursuing.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume and Chief. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comments, last I checked, and I'm going to look really quick. We do not have any comments.
Okay. This is informational. I, I too want to, you know, just piggyback off a sentiment from Supervisor Serna. It's just whether we're talking AB 109 realignment or, or reforms for our foster youth system, or certainly now DJJ realignment, all, all may be great ideas at the state level, but it's the bane of the existence of county governments that, that our state legislators don't take into account the resources that are needed, the feasibility, the logistics, and it, a lot of challenges ahead of us in, in dealing with this latest mandate from the state. So thank you for all of your efforts. And, and one last thing, I just want to also give you echoes, Supervisor Hume, and the shout-out to your staff. And I'm very proud of our probation department, certainly in Sacramento County, and you did a, a great job representing at the latest CSAC Legislative Conference in the presentation about the JDTF. So I want to thank you for that as well.
Thank you. I think I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thank, I think that completes the item. Thank you very much, Chief. And we'll move on to item 64.
All right. I think that's, I think that's me.
Our own ranks. Yes.
Okay. So this is your 2023 Own Ranks appointments to the Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. These are one-year terms, and so currently we have Supervisor Serna, Desmond, and Frost, your terms of, are going to expire, and so we need to renew those appointments.
I'm certainly happy to continue serving.
Yep. Likewise.
Okay. We'll renew those terms then.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then we can move on to your nominations and appointments. Just give me one second. You are continuing to May 23rd, the Rio Linda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to June 6th, Building Board of Appeals, Elk Grove, Casumna Cemetery District, Human Services Coordinating Council, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Youth Commission, continuing to June 13th, the Adult and Aging Commission, Casumna's Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Behavior, Health and Youth Advisory Board, and the Veterans Advisory Committee. Your first item is the Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please nominate Joe Levitt and request to waive the process.
Unanimous vote. And then for the Community Review Commission, Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Mike Martel.
Thank you. Okay.
I have on my sheet, I'm clerk D1, D3, D4, and D5.
Yes. Are you guys continuing? I have notes on here that you're continuing.
Continue to June 6th, please, I guess.
I have continued to June 13th, for whatever reason I'm lying.
Okay. We'll put you for June 13th. And do you want the same thing, Mr. Hume?
June 6th.
June 6th. Got it. What would you like, Mr. Desmond?
June 6th, please.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend continue to June 13th.
And the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Jay Martinez.
And would you like to continue the remainder?
Yes, I would.
Okay. How about June 13th?
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Recreation and Park Commission, Supervisor Desmond.
Please nominate Garrett McDermott.
All right. And the Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
Please continue to June 13th.
And Mr. Hume?
Continue to June 13th.
Okay. And that's it. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. Next turn to our county exec for comments.
No comments today. Thank you.
Okay. Then I'll turn to my, my colleagues, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have a couple items. First of all, we heard via phone this morning from Lee Miller regarding some outstanding concerns that she and others have about the legal fireworks enforcement plan. And I would like to respectfully request that we have a report back, an open session to this board, preferably before we break. I know that the calendars are probably starting to get pretty congested at this point, but it makes sense, I think, before the 4th of July holiday. So I've had taken the opportunity to meet with Lee and others. I think other of my colleagues have done the same in recent weeks and days, but there is some concern about the level of enforcement as it relates to our local fire districts as well as our sheriff's department. So I think those two sister agencies should be approached to be part of whatever update or presentation might occur in front of the Board of Supervisors. And then, secondly, my chief and I had an opportunity recently to meet with some very concerned residents of the Old Town Foreign Community. Both Supervisor Kennedy and I represent that community. As it relates to the Water District, we are being told that there are some very disconcerting, there's some disconcerting behavior, apparently, on behalf of some members of the board, and specifically violations of, or potential violations of Brown Act. I don't know if our county council's been briefed on what some of those allegations are, but they have surfaced to the point of being very concerning to me if true. So I'm not sure the best way to maybe involve the county in exploring how to investigate what may or may not be happening, but I think it's high time that we take the time to educate ourselves, because some of the accounts I'm hearing about two-person board meetings and, and a lack of noticing of agendas and other, I think, very clear violations, again, if true, violations of the Brown Act are very troubling. So I'm hopeful that between the exec's office and county council's office that we can come up with a plan. And I would even suggest perhaps talking to the DA's office in terms of our fraud investigators perhaps being engaged as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. And I agree with you on the fireworks issue. I'll work with, with staff to try to get something on the agenda for June. I agree, we have to do that before July, for sure. Okay. Supervisor Hume? No?
I had the same thing. I wanted to ask for the enforcement plan to come back.
Okay. Okay. Well, then, seeing no further comments from my, my colleagues, we will adjourn this meeting at 12:20.